Wonderful. Good evening, Peralta Community. Thank you for joining the Peralta Governing Board Meeting.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by pound.
Okay, let's try that again. Yes. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining the Peralta Community College Governing Board Meeting. It is March 22nd and I'm calling the meeting to order at 6:01. Okay, let's move on to 3.2, Pledge of Allegiance. Let us have trustee Gonzalez U N. The Pledge of Allegiance, please. Once the flag is up.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Let us have roll call, please.
Student trustee Hogan. Student trustee Cooper.
Present, here.
Thank you. Trustee Whitrow.
Here.
Trustee Jenkins.
Here.
Trustee Handy.
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez U N.
Right here.
Trustee Bonilla. Trustee Bonilla. Absent. Thank you. Trustee Delphine Polk.
I'm here.
Trustee Napoleon Bellaries.
Here.
Thank you so much. You have a question.
Thank you. We're on to 3.4, the affirmation of the statement of cooperation. And as you all know, the Peralta Board has adopted a statement of cooperation that codifies our commitment to set the bar for excellence in governance in community college leadership and to lead by example for our Peralta colleges. The full statement of cooperation is in front of you right now and it's also attached to the agenda. But in summary, we have committed to these three things. To build trust and seek to understand each other. Number two, to be prepared and follow good governance and ethical protocols. And number three, to model the behavior we want others to exhibit. Okay, let's move on to 3.5, Report of Action Taken in Closed Session. Vice President Delphine Polk.
We have no readout for closed session. Thank you.
3.6, Approval of the Agenda.
So moved.
Thank you. Trustee Whitrow, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez U N. No discussion, nothing to be pulled from the agenda. This is a time to do it and discuss. All right. Let's have roll call, please.
Student trustee Hogan.
Yes.
Student trustee Cooper.
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez U N.
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla. Absent. Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellaries. Motion passes.
Thank you. 3.7, Approval of the Minutes. May I have a motion for that, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Trustee Whitrow. A second.
Second.
Thank you. Trustee Jenkins. Discussion. Seeing none, roll call.
Student trustee Hogan.
Yes.
Student trustee Cooper.
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez U N.
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla, absent. Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellaries.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. 3.8, Associated Student Government Reports. Do we have student leaders with us today?
Yes. Harry, I believe, is with us already as a panelist.
Fantastic. Do we have others as well?
Looking right now, yes, I'm going to move over Bilal from Laney.
Anyone else? Harry, who got Bilal.
Don't see any other students with their hands raised.
If they get here.
Bilal, are you with us?
Maisha, I believe he's still on the attendee side.
No, I just moved him over. He just moved over. Okay. Took a delay. Okay. Bilal, are you with us now?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, great.
Let's start with Harry and then let's go on to Bilal.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President and members of the board. So in our previous meeting, we, the ASBC decided the graduation theme for this year, which will be resilient or resilience for BCC students. And we also selected three students to go to the SSC General Assembly, which will be occurring during the spring break, April 1st to April 3rd, I believe. And we also had a bunch of very successful events. The Women Leadership Club organized a very successful event, as well as the Psychology Club. And I'd just like to thank the members of those clubs, as well as the student life at BCC for helping organize those events. And then the ASBC elections, the campaign is occurring at the moment. And the election will be happening on April 12th to April 13th. So, and the voter guide will be released very soon, so students can know about the candidates more, and as well as the voting process and how that will be happening. And the food pantry at BCC is really, really successful at the moment. It occurs every second and fourth of the month on Thursdays. So every second and fourth of the month of Thursday. So it will be happening this Thursday and the food pantry. So students can come and get free food. I also get free food myself and there's enough food for everyone. And there's also bags, so you don't have to worry about having to bring your own bag. We provide, they provide those, so you can just take as much as you need. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Harry.
Thank you.
Bilal.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Board of Trustees, community members. As well, we will be have, same as ASBC, we have four students going to the SSC General Assembly, April 1st to the 3rd as well. We, the election is ongoing. Petitions are out for ASLC students, candidates. We have a few events in this month and the coming month. Tomorrow, we will be having the AS, Laney BSU, the Laney Black Student Union Ice Cream Social, which is sponsored by EC Reams. And it's EC Reams, if Oakland members know, the late Bishop Ernestine Cleveland Reams founded that organization. They will be sponsoring and providing the Laney BSU with ice cream for Ice Cream Social tomorrow. And it is from 12:00 to 2:00 PM at the Laney Quad. Secondly, it is in the planning stages. We do, we will be hosting from April 21st to April 23rd, the California Community Colleges, the Black Caucus for California Community Colleges in collaboration with the Committee Board that plans that with SSC via Laney BSU. Lastly, I would also like to mention, yes, we will, we will also, Laney ASLC is planning with a nonprofit organization to provide menstrual products for students in the Student Center. By the end of this month, we should be receiving those packages that are coming from a nonprofit organization with more information forthcoming. Thank you so much. And that concludes my announcement. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Bilal.
We also have Karen Torres.
Hello. Good evening, Madam President, Chancellor, and members of the board. As both colleges, we are also having Senator Venezuela and our Director Rodriguez attending the SSC General Assembly. On top of that, we are still continuing to work on the events and flyers that we mentioned last meeting with an addition of events that we're having. One is tomorrow for the Health Service Presentation Wellness Wednesday in the quad at the Community College of Alameda. And also, we will be having, where we will be having free akaya bowls for the students, yoga, music, therapy for dogs, therapy for dogs, and art table. The yoga will start at 12:30, so if anybody would like to come, it'll be at 12:30. We also, for April, are having, acknowledging our peers and staff for Ramadan. Give me a second, and more details will be coming to everyone. And then also, on April 19th, we will have an on-campus celebration for Swana Heritage Month. Swana stands for Southwest Asian, Arab, and North African heritage. And we'll be having more details for that. We also are hosting our elections. We're doing really well with those. We're pushing them. And we're also pushing other information that will be on the ballot. And that is for us, that's all for us today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Karen, for that. Maisha, do we have one other student leader or we?
No, I don't think so. We have Jennifer Shonowski with her hand up, but it's not a student leader. So I think we are with our student leaders for right now.
Yes, yes. And Bilal, did you have a comment?
Yes, I'm sorry. I forgot to mention as well, this Saturday, we will be hosting the Be Like Coders Hackathon. I don't even understand why I forgot to say that. But yeah, we'll have judges from Microsoft, Salesforce Cloud, judging different apps that students will create to help the student body.
Very cool. Thank you for adding that. All right. Let's move on to 3.9, Peralta Classified Senate Report. Hi, Terrence.
Hello. Good evening, President Reese, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Jackson, presidents, and guests. Tonight, we have two classified Senate Campus Reports. The first report comes from the Berkeley City College Classified Senate. The next classified professional Senate meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, March 23rd, at 2:30 PM. The BCC Classified Leadership Team is in the process of developing professional development workshops that include presentations from the University of California and Cal State University Admission Representatives to provide information on Bachelor of Arts and Graduate Degree Completion Programs for Working Adults and Financial Literacy Workshops, including savings programs, retirement options, and investments. The second report comes from the Laney College Classified Senate. Laney College hosted the One Stop Spring Festival 2.0 on Wednesday, March 16th, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM was the virtual component. Classified professionals, staff, and administration supported over 125 students enrolling and receiving in-person assistance with signing up for late start classes. All attendees were served a barbecue lunch prepared by the Laney Culinary Department. Okay. The next, the mission statement for Laney College states, Laney College educates, supports, and inspires students to excel in an inclusive and diverse learning environment rooted in social justice. The Laney College Classified Senate is committed to the goal of diversity, equity, and inclusion, DEI, and hiring future Peralta employees. The conversation should reflect the diverse student population and the community we serve. Furthermore, the curriculum needs to respond to the community's needs and respect the current trends. The Laney College Classified Senate seeks to partner with the Laney Administration, the other classified senators, the Chancellor's office, and the Peralta Association for African-American Affairs Hall to work toward establishing DEI goals to obtain a workforce truly reflective of the diverse student population and the surrounding community Peralta serves. Please join us. That is the end of the Campus Reports. Thank you very much for your continued support of the Peralta Classified Senate.
Thank you, Terrence, for that report. Let's go to 3.10, District Academic Senate Report. Hi, Donald.
Good evening, President of Bellaries, members of the board, Chancellor Jackson, presidents, guests, the Peralta community. Tonight, I'm going to be talking about our upcoming cuts for this upcoming year. The estimate of FTEF for next year is going to be roughly around 12,800 FTS. Right now, we're in the low 1,300 FTS. So, excuse me, FTS. And with the cuts that have roughly been at about 10% this year, when you couple it again with this past year's cuts only, we are really now cutting at the bone, particularly for some departments. When you have small departments, there isn't much to cut. And so if you cut, it becomes much more magnified. One of the tenets that we have been striving for has been to try to increase and have reflected in our faculty for those that we teach. And one of the ways that we've been able to do that has been bringing in more faculty of color through our part-time ranks. And unfortunately, with these cuts, we continue to cut. And I'm going to make this a little bit more personal and related to my department. My department at Laney, which is the Earth and Human Sciences Department. We have geography, anthropology, and geology in our department. And my area leaned in terms of anthropology. And the last, this year and next year, we've basically cut 46% of our FTS, which is just overwhelming. And within that, in terms of our faculty of color, again, that constitutes a good portion of those that we've had to release. Overall, what I think this district and the entire Community College of California needs to look at is we are chasing FTS. And part of that is this core belief in productivity of 17.5. And those two things have necessitated this cutting of faculty. I have heard numerous complaints from CE and other places where classes are being cut. The faculty who could teach a particular class for people to get their certificates or to get their degrees have been cut, so that those classes aren't going to be offered. Any number of those kinds of stories you will continue to hear. It is probably the most disheartening thing to tell your colleague and somebody you've been working with that your services are no longer welcome here. And the larger picture to this is, is that we've gone from 19,000 some odd FTS down to the estimate for this upcoming year being about 12,800 FTS. Okay, I want you all to really stop and think about that. This has been going on prior to the pandemic. The pandemic has accelerated for us in this district and obviously other community college districts. But what plan have we enacted that is attempting to stop this downward spiral? Nothing has been done. How much money has been devoted towards marketing? If there's an increase, what are the visible outcomes of that? Each of the presidents have their own committees that incrementally try to do things. So at Laney College, we have students taking more classes, which is really great. We are adding more students and doing late classes. Any number of different things to try to meet this mythical number that we're all trying to get towards. But yet, we continue to go on a downward spiral such that when you look at it at 12,800 FTS, those numbers would probably be for a mid-sized college. I want everybody to think about that, for a mid-sized college. If this downward trend continues to go, and let's say we hit 10,000 FTS in the next year or two with no hope of stopping this, then you really have to start to ask yourself, do we have to have four colleges to spread around 10,000 FTS? These are big, big issues. And we're not doing any planning or articulating any plan that really is trying to address these issues in the kind of broad way that we need. Instead, what is happening is because of this 17.5 elusive target of productivity, we continue to cut our FTS. And now we're cutting bone. We're cutting classes that are desperately needed and faculty that brings the diversity to our classes. And so at what point are we going to start cutting administrators? At what point are we going to stop having these salaries of administrators continuing to rise? Ultimately, all of these things affect us. And ultimately, the economy of our area even get affected when we have to release our adjunct faculty. So my hope is that as you all look at enrollment management and as the Chancellor puts forward her initiatives to try to address these issues, let's look really critically at these and look at things of how we can ultimately stop our downward trend and then to again to increase it. And my challenge to the Chancellor and the presidents is, when do we say that we have stopped the downward trend? Is it after one semester? Is it after two semesters? Is it after three semesters? Right? When do we start waving our hand and say, oh, we've stopped the downward trend? I don't know what that is, but I would like to know. Ultimately, we keep on doing business as usual. We keep on flipping budgets as usual. And we do nothing to really begin to address this downward trend. And we really don't have very, very real and hard discussions about can we even achieve this 17.5 productivity in the atmosphere that we're currently existing in? So my implore, my implore to the Board of Trustees and to the Chancellor and to the presidents is, we have to come up with a better way of doing this. And if not, then we need to challenge the state and challenge our fellow administrators and faculty and everybody about this 17.5 productivity. Why are we held to 17.5 productivity if colleges and universities other than us don't look at those kinds of things? So we really need to begin to have these wider discussions and begin to really, really start to address this. Because if we continue to do business as usual, we aren't going to have four colleges. We're going to have four centers, right? We know that there are numbers of students for each of those things that is defined by a college, that is defined by a center. So my urging of the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor is, is that we have to articulate a plan and we have to change the budget in order to enhance that plan. And that plan then has to be articulated to the faculty and everybody. And hopefully, we can have a dialogue about that rather than it just being implemented so we can do something about our participatory governance process that we have. So I will end with that. We're having spring break next week. Some of us will be working, no doubt, because we have eight-week courses that we've taken as late courses that started this week. But my hope is that the trustees and the chancellor will really come together and try to work with us to address these issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Donald, for that. Let's move on to 3.11, Public Communication.
Okay, I am going to move over Jennifer Shonowski, Stephen Zetlin, and Candace Ralster, and Vanessa Rhodes. And if there's anyone else who'd like to speak and was registered as an attendee, please raise your hand. Okay, thank you. Okay, Jennifer Shonowski and Stephen Zetlin are in. Jennifer, are you there? Jennifer, are you there?
I'm trying, I'm trying, Mai.
Come in, I see your.
Good evening. Before I start, I have prepared comments. I just want to echo a little bit of what Donald was just saying. And I'd like to know where the productivity measure is of the administration who makes the decisions for the enrollment strategies for our colleges. And I'd also like to know where the productivity measure is for the Board of Trustees that are the, you know, have the fiscal responsibility for keeping us whole for many years in the future. Okay, I'm gonna start my real comments now. So last year, at the May eleventh Board of Trustees meeting, full-time faculty showed up to share with many of you the concerns that they have about, had about the lack of full-time hiring and an over-reliance on a part-time workforce. Our chancellor shared her experience counseling a staff member who was worried about being laid off. And as I remember the story, it was told in an attempt to explain a fiscally conservative approach to hiring as a position of compassion so that layoffs would never be necessary again while she was at the helm. And I really, I believe this story. I believe it came from a genuine and kind place. And I'm truly grateful that we have a chancellor who considers the people impacted by decisions made. In Peralta, according to our own BI tool, more than fifty percent of our classes are currently, currently being taught by part-time faculty. This far exceeds the twenty-five percent that's outlined as the goal in state law and far exceeds what seems prudent in planning and executing long-term instructional planning. It also means that when we're cutting classes, we're talking about part-time jobs. When we reduce our FTEF as dramatically as we have in the last several years, it means we're losing huge numbers of part-time faculty. It's cutting faculty jobs and reducing student access. We don't usually refer to class cuts as layoffs, but they are layoffs. And the impacts of those layoffs are significant. Those are people who count on teaching these courses, who prepare and budget and plan for them. In many instances, the people teaching these classes have worked in Peralta for many, many years. For many, the income they get for these classes is their only income. And for our students, these part-timers are their teachers, mentors, and advisors. When we cut classes, we lay people off. And we are laying people off while our revenues from the state are increasing. You all are making decisions to lay people off while you collect more and more dollars from the state. And just like we should consider carefully the loss of our classified staff and full-time faculty, we also need to consider our part-time workforce. These are the folks that keep our colleges running, that keep our programs running, and that serve our students day in, day out. These are the ones that keep education moving in the Peralta district. And who commit to a Peralta that isn't committed to them. Tonight, you're going to hear from a few of those faculty members. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. We now have Stephen Zetlin.
Hello, my name is Stephen Zetlin, and I teach ESL at Laney College. I'm a tenured faculty member and I've been working at Laney since two thousand and six. Mai, how much time do I have?
Um, three minutes, but about two, two minutes and sixteen seconds now.
Right. So, as I said, I've worked here since two thousand and six. And I know ESL was the largest department on the campus. In fact, about three years ago, we were employing twenty-five part-time faculty in ESL. In the fall, we will only be able to give classes to five part-time teachers in ESL. Makes me emotional, sorry. Because I want you to remember that these are people, these are people who we know, who are our friends and colleagues, who are paying for, paying their rent, paying their mortgages, paying for food, paying all their bills with, and then suddenly losing their jobs. And it's not like we can send them to another school. There's no jobs out there. So what's happening is your, the administration is saying, let's cut classes ten percent. But what does that actually mean? It means that people who we know, who we work with every day, suddenly are unemployed and don't have an income. I want, I would like to ask you all to try to remember that with each class that is canceled, this is a person who is suddenly unemployed. And it makes me quite upset when I see that the, that the administration creates new positions, such as a deputy chancellor, where there was none, who's getting paid hundreds of thousands of dollars. How many part-time teachers could that employ? Why are we making more positions for administrators and yet firing teachers? These are the questions that I'd like everyone to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. We now have Vanessa Rhodes.
Hi, good evening. Again, my name is Vanessa Rhodes. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you all. I wanted to share my own personal experience with you all. I taught labor studies class at Laney. Specifically, I taught collective bargaining, labor law, and grievance handling. I was invited to work on revitalizing the labor studies program at Laney in the fall of two thousand and eighteen. After three semesters of offering classes, the program was put on pause, but effectively cut. So I want to share with you all tonight that when the district cuts classes or discontinues programs, it has a real effect on the students and their plans for the future. I know this personally to be true for the labor study students that I worked with. In fact, at a labor event I went to, I ran into a former student who shared with me her disappointment that she couldn't pursue the labor studies program because there were no more labor studies classes being offered. I've also received emails from students, which I've had to reply to them. I don't know, we're hoping. And folks are left frustrated and unclear about how they're going to continue to pursue their AA. I think it's important, you know, to consider the many, many students who were unable to graduate or pursue a career or degrees because of this, this cut. So I just wanted to leave you all with a question. If it's Peralta's mission statement that we're about advancing social and economic transformation for students and the community through quality education rooted in equity, social justice, environmental sustainability, then why are we telling our community and our students, why are we starting a program and then cutting the program after three semesters? How does that live up to our values and commitment to the students that we serve? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Vanessa. We now have Candace, Candace Rousher.
Good evening, everyone. Name is Dr. Rousher. I'm in ethnic studies at Merritt. And this is my first academic year. And I'm already dealing with course cancellations. I taught African-American history in the fall. I was assigned to teach African-American politics, which I was informed had not been offered for two to three years because there was no one to teach it. I don't think this is a good impression on a brand-new faculty member to Peralta. I've taught at the State University of New York, City University of New York, St. George University, and Fordham here in New York. I'm a New Yorker. And I've been rated as a highly effective instructor. And I wanted to bring that experience and skill to students in California. Was very excited last term to have California students. And so it was such a disappointment to have my class canceled to find out that despite our threshold here in New York being ten to run a class, that it would be twenty-five at Peralta. And it's even more disappointing because we are living some key history in America right now. The course, again, was African-American politics. And so the two, the ten students who did register are missing out on some of the great, some of the great history and context behind seeing the first African-American woman nominated to the Supreme Court. You know, I thought that things would be better despite the fact that the decline in enrollment, issues with jobs and higher ed in the country have been happening for the last five-plus, almost ten years. The pandemic has made it worse. And I was just hopeful that colleges were figuring out a way to, to be able to continue to offer higher education to Americans' students. I've shared with people, there's a thing that we have going on in higher ed that most people don't know about. I refer to us, and I'm an adjunct, as McDonald's higher ed faculty in America. And I'm just hoping that my experience, as well as others, will be taken into consideration and trying to rectify the situation for Peralta. Thank you.
Thank you, Candace. We're now moving over Kim Murphy. Kim, are you with us? Kim, are you there? Okay, I will, I'm sorry. Hi, yes, you can go ahead.
My name is Kim Murphy. I teach psychology at Merritt College. I'm also the president of the Board of Trustees for St. Vincent de Paul of Alameda County. For all of you who do not know, our mission is to serve the poor and the unhoused. We serve five hundred meals six days a week and operate shelters in the evenings. Peralta's mission statement says that we are about advancing social and economic transformation for students and the community through quality education. Yet, at exactly the moment when disadvantaged communities, our communities, need us to think about their needs and their future, we're cutting classes. We have the money from the sustainability grants. Please keep the focus on our students, our staff, and our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Moving over Molly Seeland. Molly, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you for having me, trustees, chancellors, presidents, and the community. I'm here as the SEIU steward for Merritt College. I'm here to speak about the Barbara Lee Science Building and the state of affairs with the maintenance and operations. It's come to our attention two years ago through Cal OSHA. There was a complaint about the fume hoods and the airflow. And this, to me, is very disheartening that we would have a seven-year-old building with these kinds of issues. These are serious gaps for health and safety of our students and of our staff. Their shortages in the staffing of the maintenance and operations side of the house is a serious concern for everyone in the building. We have issues with elevators, with formaldehyde smells in the hallways. And we just don't have the staff to support the operations of a new building. We need our staff to be trained in technology for these new buildings. And we need to fix our work order system that is severely broken. Langishing work orders for two or more years is unacceptable, and I think you would all agree. We have students in UC Extension classes that are contracted to use these classrooms and our staff. And the systems are turned off on the weekends. Why are our systems not talking to each other? Why are our staffs not talking to each other? This is just very unacceptable. Barbara Lee would be ashamed if she knew. So thank you for your time, and I hope you spend some time helping us fix the staffing as well as the systems that employees were doing two and three jobs, just as the administration is tasked with doing multiple work for different areas of concern. So I thank Dr. Johnson for helping us. I thank Atheria Smith for doing what she can. But really, it's going up the chain. We need your help. We need this to be addressed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Molly. Moving over Michael Lin. Michael, are you there? Michael? Okay, in the meantime, I'm going to move over Judy Juanita. Michael, if you come back, you can speak after Judy. Are you there, Judy?
Oh, I'm here.
Oh, okay, go ahead, Michael.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, my name is Michael. So I just want to speak a little bit tonight about also my personal experience, especially with the budget cuts. So I used to teach political science and social science at BCC. And I was there since two thousand and sixteen. So you might say I'm one of the casualties of the budget cuts. You know, I do get students who still reach out to me and ask, you know, if I'm still teaching there, if I will be teaching there in the future. And it, you know, is very painful for me to have to tell them that I'm not there. Because, you know, as an adjunct, I have no guarantee, right, of a class, you know, at any time in the future, you know, academic term. You know, my classes can be cut before the semester starts for low enrollment, and they have been. So I'm just worried that, about the direction that the district is heading in. I fear that, you know, this is not going to help us get away from the declining enrollment trend that Donald talked about earlier. And I really want to ask the board members and all of the admin to think hard about how, you know, this is affecting the quality of education in the classroom for our students. You know, we may be able to raise productivity and have a greater student-to-teacher ratio. But in the end, how does that affect, you know, the quality of education for students inside the classroom, right? How does that affect the quality of instruction for us as faculty members? In my experience, right, I think that students benefit from having smaller class sizes and that that's something that we should consider looking, going forward. And that if we are able to maintain our class offerings and even expand them from the levels that they currently reside at, you know, then we may be able to bring students back who have, you know, gone to other districts, for instance, because they don't have the courses here that they need or want. So that's the main thing that I wanted to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, we can go with Judy Juanita now. You're on mute. Sorry, you're on mute.
Good evening, all. I'm Judy Juanita. I'm a part-timer at Peralta. I've been here twenty-nine years in the English department. I love Oakland. I love Oaklanders. I love the Bay Area. That's why I'm here. I love being here. There's a precarious situation that we've been in now for a while, markedly this past ten years. Peralta is using part-timers as a battering ram, okay? You invite us to teach our classes. You invite us to teach our classes. I always sign up for 10 units. I'm pretty much the senior part-timer. So they start out giving me 10 units, which is a a decent uh, living wage for me right now here. Well, you used to allow classes a couple of weeks at the start of the semester uh, while students got their financial aid and their schedules together. Now, however, cus- classes are being cut um, when students aren't fully enrolled in them 10 days before school starts, five days before school starts. So you're getting teachers to sign up for these classes, knowing you're going to cut them. And then you shove the students into other classes or just lose them altogether. This is an income for us. It's our way of making a living. Once we've accepted a schedule from you, even though it's not a, yes, a guarantee, uh, we can't accept classes at other schools. It makes it so that we can't plan our life. Um, the message that the district is sending to part-timers is, you don't have life. We're not worried about you. Uh, so this practice, just this one practice alone of rolling out a full length of classes, knowing somewhere, either in your discussions or what have you, that you're gonna be cutting, is um, poor administrative planning. It's um, it's an unfair labor practice. It's inhumane and inefficient treatment of your workers. And I hope that um, you can see that it even is treating your students like cannon fodder. Uh, and I hope that we cannot, uh, we can discontinue this uh, very unfair practice as soon as possible. Thank you for your attention.
You're muted, Mike. Sorry, they're better. Um, thank you, Judy. I've moved over Amit Singh. You could go now.
All right, good evening, everybody. My name's Amit Singh. Uh, I am a part-time faculty member uh, at Laney College. Sometimes I teach at Merritt, but lately, they haven't had very many classes. But I've been at Laney since 2014, so about eight years now. Um, I teach mathematics and have been doing so since 2014. So I I teach at three different districts, and what Judy just said, I can relate to that a lot, so. I uh, I commute to three places a week, and so it's challenging for me. And so with the uh, course cancellations, my class, I'm really lucky it didn't get canceled at in at Laney this semester um, because I only had 12 students. But I was really worried the whole break in December that they were gonna cut it, but luckily the dean didn't, did not, did not cancel it. So uh, statistics, uh, one of my classes did cancel at another school I teach at in Livermore, Los Pozitas, because I only had seven students in it. And then I also teach in Fremont. That's the third place I teach at, and I didn't get my, I didn't get my usual load. They normally give me 10 units. And so I only got three, so that's really hurting me this semester. And not just me, but a lot of my colleagues as well that I work with at those schools have told me that they're not getting very much loads, that they're struggling to pay their bills. And then since we drive a lot, the gas prices, as you know, are really high, so that's a challenge. So I've lost about, you know, 45 or 50% of my cut for, of my paycheck, and that's, I still have to pay my rent and all my bills, and so I'm I'm barely holding my head above the water at the end of the month. And I'm sure a lot of people are doing much worse than me, so that, so I'm speaking for them as well. Um, so as as we've heard, a lot of people feel the cuts are unnecessary because things are already cut. So if we make a 10% cut, that that's just gonna add salt to the wound for the part-timers especially. So we're hoping that there could be some compromise uh, between the board members and the faculty. So we we can all go home happy and we all have decent-paying jobs at the end of the day, and we'd love to do what we do. We're passionate. You're passionate about your, about what you guys do, I'm sure. And instructors are very passionate. Um, so um, the enrollment's also a big issue. If these, if we cut these classes, it could also lead to less students wanting to enroll as well. As we see this semester, there's not a lot. Okay, so yeah, that's pretty much what I wanted to say. I think I made my points clear. So hopefully everything works out uh, for the fall, right? Thank, thank you.
Thank you, Amit.
Sure.
Now I have Jeff Sinsari in the, uh, as a promoted to panelist. Jeff, are you there?
Yeah, um, actually, I was just going to see my time to the wonderful Karen Panich. So if her name is on the list, go ahead and pass it there. I was gonna put it in the chat, but it was turned off.
Okay, I will move her over. Moving over Karen Panich now. Karen, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here. Yes, we. All right, thank you so much. Thank you, Jeff. Um, so thanks so much for letting um, us talk and um, uh, so share our concerns with you about the cuts that are coming up. Um, my name is Karen Panich. I'm a part-timer in the ESOL department at Laney. Um, a bit of part-time employer since 2000. Um, before the pandemic, I also taught at CCSF. I was let go along with 250 other part-timers. I was one of 40 part-time ESL teachers there, um, who has not worked at City since May of 2020. A cynical friend of mine lamented at the start of the pandemic that he hoped the pandemic would, wouldn't become an excuse for districts to downsize permanently. I thought he was just being pessimistic, but here we are with that exact, very unfortunate and completely unnecessary possibility. With the proposed cuts in our fall schedule, only a handful of the Laney ESOL departments, 20 part-timers, will get 10 hours of teaching. I've already lost half my income when I got laid off from City, and now it's looking like I might lose more. And I'm in better shape than most since I've been here for 22 years, and I get health insurance through my husband. My colleague with Lupus is not so lucky if she goes below six units, which is very likely she will lose her health insurance. Since I helped create and develop our basic English non-credit program five years ago, it has been my dream to be able to offer all four levels of our program each eight weeks. Um, we've never been able to get there, but we do consistently fill all three class levels each eight weeks. The program gives hours to seven part-time teachers. In the fall, it will probably only have hours for one full-timer and one part-timer. Instead of growing and meeting this demand, we are shrinking back to two levels each eight weeks for the fall. That means our lowest-level students will have to wait six months for the appropriate level to be offered. I teach Level One Basic English students, one of the most vulnerable student populations. My students are new refugees from Afghanistan, from Yemen, people fleeing wars, poverty, trauma, people starting their journey to gain the very necessary English skills that will allow them to function and succeed here. People who have never been in a classroom before. I have students like that. They often are older immigrants with no or little computer skills, young people wanting a better life, parents wanting a better life for their children. The stories would rock you to your core if I had more time to share them with you. Many of these students just disappeared when we went online. But now that we're back and we are able to have face-to-face classes, many have returned. The Basic English program classes are all full. We need to grow, not shrink. These classes fill. The community needs them. These classes feed the rest of the colleges. But you need to have a growth mindset. You need to see this as an opportunity to grow back better, not shrink our programs so that only the most senior part-timers get hours and everyone else is out of luck.
Sorry, 10 seconds?
Uh, am I getting uh, Jeff's time as well?
Awesome, you're right. Go ahead.
Okay. These students deserve for their education not to be interrupted because the administration is claiming we have to cut classes. We don't have the money. Enrollments are down. We need a little more time. The colleges are just now really opening up. Enrollments will go up. Our eight-week classes that started this week are full. Don't use the low enrollment during COVID and slow increase back to normal as an excuse to decimate our programs, lay off or under-employ hundreds of teachers. Our students deserve better. Our part-time faculty deserve better. Enrollments will rise if we have the classes. Cutting classes just feeds into the spiraling. We can be smarter about this. Don't see CCSF as a model. It should be a cautionary tale, something to look at and say, well, we won't let that happen here. Making these drastic cuts is so short-sighted, so cynical, and when you see the facts, it's also quite dishonest. Let's show some visions, some bravery, some integrity. Leaders that lead are finding ways to grow back better and smarter. Please take a close look at Jennifer and Lowell's presentation, their analysis of why basing everything on productivity is foolhardy. It's really not so innovative. It's just common sense. We don't need to cut. We need to be smart. Work together to grow back better, not shrink to a pitiful size which just sends more students away. We need to fight against the self-feeding monster we are creating. Cutting leads to declines in enrollment. Having lots of options, lots of class offerings with perhaps smaller classes leads to increases in enrollment. We can't afford that, you say. Yes, we can. We have the money. Don't tell us we don't. It's not true. It's an excuse. Do the right thing. Don't make these cuts. Let's circle back in a year's time when the pandemic is completely behind us. Students will come back. We need to have offerings for them. We just need time. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Karen. Sorry about that. Um, we have Chris Wyden back in with us now. Chris, you there? You there, Chris?
Yes, I am.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Uh, it always, it takes a few seconds to go from, you know, just a listener to a participant, so. And then the phone always freaks out, and you gotta push buttons and stuff like that. Good evening, everyone. Um, I am, I I'm, I don't have totally unique uh, ideas to share tonight. I'm gonna reinforce some things people have already said a little bit, but I do have uh, some new things to add, I think. Uh, I'm mainly thinking of the horizon uh, for summer and fall in the next some, next several years. Uh, I look ahead and I see, I I I know that a great many people will be looking to build job-related skills and earn certifications, degrees, and transfer status to pursue bachelor's degrees. Many of them have either struggled with online classes or have been sitting it out until on-campus, in-person classes are uh, again, available in the high numbers and um, across the different educational programs that they're looking for. Still, others may not be aware that many of the career education programs have basically continued to offer instruction on campus, although spots in some of those programs have been limited by safety measures. Many OUSD educators have expressed concern about the high number of students, their high school students, that is, who struggled academically when learning went online, some whose grades declined, some who failed, and some who dropped out altogether. All of those students could really use the Peralta colleges now uh, and would benefit tremendously from programs like Gateway to College at Laney, uh, at Laney. I believe Gateway's at another college, at least one more of our Peralta colleges. Uh, but those who, grades have declined, um, they, they may have had to change their outlook for college. They they may have, they may need to make other plans. I think they're gonna be looking to us. I think it's a reasonable uh, a reasonable assumption, um, a reasonable forecast to expect that we're gonna have more of those students looking to us uh, than would have been without the pandemic. A business reporter friend of mine uh, spent about a year interviewing employers around the nation. Um, I I I'm gonna share this as soon as his work is published and he's willing to share the link with me. Um, I'll share it with uh, members of the board and uh, some of the district administrators and college presidents. He he said he was shocked to hear how many sectors are shifting their minimum qualifications for entry-level jobs from bachelor's degrees to associate. Uh, the the fact that there's a movement to change four-year degrees down to three-year bachelor, bachelor's degrees. That, again, the these things, these are pressures that are um, making community colleges more desirable, more valuable. Um, they're gonna be, we're, we're gonna be the choice for more students, and we gotta get ready for that. This district.
All right, 10 seconds, Chris.
Thank you. This district is not broke. The hold harmless funding, we're gonna spread this message so everyone hears it. The hold harmless funding takes care of us for a couple more years. Now's the time to do planning and get ready to get out of the great pause and into the great comeback. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have Matthew Whitmire with us, Whitmire?
Yes, Whitmire. Thank you very much.
Yes.
That's okay. Hello, everyone. Uh, my name is Matthew Whitmire. I'm a part-time instructor at Merritt College in the Landscape Horticulture Department. I'm also a proud 2019 Merritt College graduate. Going to school as a non-traditional student for a career change was the best decision I've ever made. Taking classes and getting my degree in Landscape Horticulture changed my life for the better, and it gave me the opportunity to be a Merritt instructor, teaching a subject that I care passionately about. This is my first semester teaching. For the past two years, I worked with other Landscape Horticulture faculty to create eight new classes and a brand-new certificate of achievement in basic cannabis horticulture. I have had multiple students tell me that they wanted to sign up for the cannabis classes offered this stu-, this semester, but were unable to do so because of various scheduling conflicts. And they wanna know the next time they'll be answered. I literally can't give them that answer, though, since I don't know, and these courses are yet to be institutionalized, and I fear that they won't be. I've asked my department co-chairs and dean about this, and so far their response is basically, we don't know either. Maybe, we hope so, but don't hold your breath. California has over 50,000 cannabis industry jobs right now, and there's a shortage of qualified applicants. To put that in perspective, there are more cannabis workers than bank tellers in the state. I'm really excited to be teaching these classes, but I don't know whether to be editing my classes now to make them better for future iterations and putting time and effort into building this program, or to be looking for a new job right now. Uh, also, I'm missing a really great presentation from our Chemistry Department about cannabis lab testing, to be speaking about this tonight. Our advisory board for this certificate recommended that we also create an intermediate certificate and eventually a degree in cannabis horticulture. What should I tell our advisory board now, when I don't even know if we will continue this basic certificate for entry-level cultivators? This is honestly my dream job, and I would love to make a career teaching these classes. I have to ask, though, what was the point of creating this certificate if we don't intend to run the classes in the future? We should be talking about running more and new classes, creating new programs, and creating new pathways for jobs for these in-demand jobs for students in the 21st century, not cutting them. What's shocking to me is finding out that there's not even a budget crisis, and we're talking about cutting classes. It's simply baffling. It's bad for students. It's bad for instructors, and it's bad for the community. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Matthew. We now have Lowell Bennett. Are you there, Lowell?
Lowell?
Yes, you may proceed.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone, for having me. We, Peralta, are on a downward fiscal spiral largely of our own making. Let's be clear. Cutting FTEF means fewer classes that are offered. And not offering the classes that students need means fewer students. And year after year, we have been responding to fewer students by cutting more classes. Now, fewer students means less revenue to Peralta. And more importantly, without the classes they need, students can't complete their programs and transfer, which again means less revenue for Peralta under the Student-Centered Funding Formula. This teacher-cutting, class-cutting, student-reducing downward fiscal spiral hurts teachers, hurts Peralta's finances, and most importantly, hurts our students, which is why we're all here in the first place. Let's stop the downward fiscal spiral while we have the hold harmless resources to do it. And let's do it now. The schedules are being finalized. Time is of the essence. We can't add classes at the last minute and expect to find teachers to, to teach them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lowell. I'm now promoting Louis Quinnlin. Join us as a panelist. Louis, are you there? Are you with us, Louis? Louis, are you there? Okay, I'm gonna move over Ron, Robert Tyndall.
I I'm here.
Oh, you're, okay, go ahead.
It's trying to unmute. Uh, my name's Louis Quinnlin. Uh, I know many of you. I retired uh, almost two years ago from Laney College after teaching machine technology for uh, the last 18 years. I've been a big proponent of planning, of laying out strong mission statements and strategic goals. Uh, likewise at Peralta and our colleges, we've done that. Nowhere in those goals or mission statement do I see the number seventeen and a half percent as a productivity goal driving the mi, driving the mission of the college. We are, we are planning and, uh, to a, to a number as opposed to planning to our mission or our strategic goals of building this colleges, building our, uh, supporting our students and building opportunity in our communities. Right now, we have all kinds of employers that are screaming for our students that we can't provide, uh, classes for, right? We have programs that are being cut. The whole idea of guided pathways is being demolished by these cuts. Students do not have pathways through our programs anymore. They cannot finish in two years. They cannot finish maybe ever because those classes are being cut completely out of our curriculum. These are programs that have been approved by our industry panels and, uh, documented, uh, by the state and by the board and by our curriculum committees that there is demand for, high demand. California economy, the sixth, sixth-largest economy in the world, in large part was, uh, obtained by the, uh, role our community colleges play in education and career training. That is no longer gonna happen with the cuts that are happening, not just at Peralta, but across the state. The state realizes this isn't sane. Here's the money for the next two years. Rebuild your programs. Rebuild your career technical education programs. Rebuild your transfer programs so our students can prosper, so our communities can prosper, so our industries can grow. Reshoring is real. Industry's coming from China. They know the pandemic exposed a lot of shortages. But that cannot happen if our students cannot learn, if they cannot be trained, and if they do not have access to opportunities, the community colleges used to apply. Thank you.
Thank you, Louis. We have Noel, Noel Fagerha, Fagerha? I'm not, I'm sure I'm butchering that. I'm so sorry.
Close enough, close enough. Hi, I'm Noel Fagerhow.
Fagerhow.
Hi, thanks for having me. Thanks for giving me this opportunity, and I do want to, um, echo all of the other, uh, part-timers who have spoken. I am a part-time adjunct in the English departments at both Laney and Merritt, so, for the past six years. And I'm a former Laney student, so I have both, I have a double kind of, um, perspective on these class cuts, which is what I wanna comment on. The class canceling before the first day of class in particular. I found that extremely difficult as a student. It didn't happen often when I was a student, thank, thankfully enough. But as I've been teaching now in these two campuses, I see it happen to my students, and I feel like we are all Peralta. We are all here because of students. If, if our students weren't here, we wouldn't exist. None of our positions would exist. So, if we build it, they will come, is kind of, uh, just a, like a catchphrase that comes to my mind. But if we don't have the classes for our students, they will go elsewhere. They will decide to do something else. Um, we are the home campus for so many in this greater Bay area. And if Laney wasn't there for me, I would never have gotten to Mills where I'd finished my BA and got my master's. And my English instructor at Laney gave me my first community college teaching job, and that's family. That is what I wanna provide for my students, and as a part-time instructor, I don't often get that opportunity. I call them my repeat customers, the students who wanna take more classes with me but can't find me in the schedule, or they sign up for a class and it's canceled, and they have to scramble and, and find another place to be. And our students have enough obstacles. They don't need to get in a class and then have it canceled and have to deal with that on top of so many other hurdles they are trying to clear. And I do see this as an opportunity with so many changes in the workforce happening now due to the pandemic. Um, we will get our students back, but we won't get it if our classes keep getting canceled and the reputation is there for, oh, that, that campus isn't providing what we need. Um, that district isn't providing what we need. And so, from a student's perspective, from an adjunct instructor's perspective, I feel like we're really letting our students down, and, um, I don't like to speak too much from this perspective, but I feel like a gig worker sometimes, and I feel for those in other industries, and I, I wanna be a part of this family. I wanna feel supported and, so that I can support my students. And it's really hard to feel, thank you. It's really hard to feel that I'm doing my best for my students when there's so much uncertainty around my own classes. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Noel. Okay, we have Brianna Wing next.
Hi, my name is Brianna Wing, and I'm a student at Merritt College. I had troubles getting into Chemistry 30A this past semester. I ended up at Berkeley City College because none of the, the classes or I, the classes were all full at Merritt College, and it was a huge stressful situation. I had to wait for the codes, and it was a huge orchestra. I was elsewhere, and I had to enter the codes. But just to let you know, I, I do realize that there are budget cuts, and I don't think that it's smart to cut classes. It doesn't make sense. It's better to have more faculty teaching and smaller class sizes, because I am in a class right now, and I know that there's plenty of students within the class, and I don't even hear from the instructor when I have a question for, it's been, um, it had taken a long time, and I know that I've spoken to my other classmates, and we all know that if we email the instructor, we won't get a response within a specific timeframe that we need to submit our assignments in by. And this goes to relate to how I really like synchronous classes. I wanted to touch base on that as well. I went to the listening, the listening section, session today, um, that was hosted at Merritt College, and I prefer that because it's, it allows me to not only learn through live Zoom classes, but also have that face-to-face office hour on Zoom and work around my, my individual schedule. I think that with the finance, the five percent cut at Merritt College, even though it's just five percent, I, I learned it's just five percent today. Um, it can have really detrimental effects on not only students, but definitely faculty, and because they are actual people and their life depends on making a wage, it doesn't make sense to cut those, those faculty members out when they're much needed and appreciated. I know that Nancy Rouch was my professor for Biology 20A and 20B, and she dedicates so much time to, I foster the, the material in the class, but also the relationships between each student, and that really benefited me the most because as much as the material was very challenging, it allowed me to excel at, excel at, within the material as well. But, um, not, I understand that not every student learns the same way, and so by offering different ways, especially with the synchronous and the in-person off, classes, I, it allows for students to take, take on classes that they really need to in order to graduate and move on and get a job.
Sorry, ten seconds. Sorry about that.
Thank you so much.
Oh, okay. Um, and now we have Anne McCormick.
Hello, good evening. I'm Anne McCormick. I've been teaching part-time in the Modern Languages Department at BCC for fifteen years. Before BCC, I taught in a tenure-track position at a university, as an adjunct at a local college and at a nearby community college. But I've appreciated BCC the most because of the diverse and dedicated student body. I have a PhD from UC Berkeley, and unlike a lot of my students, I started at a community college. But I've had a, a class canceled and my salary cut in half in an instant, and since then, I've been anxious and depressed. The threats of class cuts cause a constant state of stress in me. It's always in the back of my mind as something that can happen, and that is beyond my control. My class was cut for low enrollment. I found out later that over forty percent of classes at BCC were being held at that same hour. I had no control over that, but I paid dearly for it. I realized how stressful this was for me when I recently was helping search for someone to teach a class in our department, and I found myself wondering, could I in good conscience recommend to that person that they come teach at BCC, knowing that they too could be treated or would be treated as a disposable part-time teacher? I realized then how much I feel humiliated in my work situation. The stress of part-timers' work under is not serving our students. Instructors need to be focused on teaching, on our classrooms, on our students. We should be able to attract good, dedicated teachers for our students. I hope you can find a better way, because our students deserve teachers that can concentrate on them. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. I have moved over Anna Roy. Anna, are you with us?
There you are. I see you. You're great. Um, hi, my name is Anna Roy with PFT. Many of our part-time faculty wanted to be here to tell you about how damaging the cuts are to them and to their students, but they were unavailable. One of them is Dr. Brad Balucian of the Merritt College Biology Department. He asked me to read a statement, so here it is. Peralta claims to be committed to fairness and equity. In recent years, when our leaders have decided to cut the overall budget due to declining enrollment, they looked at where to cut. There are four main personnel costs that take up much of our budget: staff, administration, full-time faculty, and part-time faculty. A simple and fair solution would have been to cut as equitably as possible across these four areas. And yet, we focused the cuts squarely on the part-time faculty, gutting their ranks and the classroom in the process. This has had two effects. It eliminated hundreds of class sections and their part-time professors, and it hurts students by giving them fewer choices and options, delaying their time to completion. It also flat-out didn't work to increase productivity. The class-cutting strategy only works from a fiscal perspective if productivity goes up, and it didn't. So we are continuing to just cut, 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 and shed FTES in the process. Don't take my word for it. Look at the data. Put simply, this policy has been unjust and ineffective. Why would we ever, ever continue, continue following it? And then some last final points for me. I just worry that PCCD is running away from its communities, from, sorry, from its commitments to the East Bay communities, leaving them to be exploited, uh, by the for-profit, private, online college industry. If PCCD doesn't rise to the occasion, and I know we can, I know you all can, the women and communities of color that you all and we are meant to serve will be driven to the exploitative, again, private, for-profit, higher education market. We're at a historic moment for community college, and due to the hold harmless funding policy, the district actually has the resources to meet this moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. We have Richard Bowley in, with us now. Richard, are you there?
I am, thank you. Good evening. Before I, uh, start, I do wanna acknowledge, um, you know, the district moved, did move forward and did address some of the concerns that I brought up, uh, in the last meeting, so I will, I will start with that. But, you know, I have some concerns that it is business as usual. Someone brought up the fact that this has been going on, you know, similar conditions for over a decade now. You know, and I, I think it's at, you know, at the time, you know, some of us have the perspective that we have to start calling things out for, you know, what, what they are or what they seem to be. Um, at least the effects of them, right? And so there's a really, you know, there's an incestuous relationship, maybe nefarious, where school districts, Board of Trustees, and administrators recycle, you know, recycle these positions, um, amongst each other, you know? So districts will hire, you know, in this instance, at least two retired chancellors. You know, and the hiring process itself was very unclear. Um, I don't even know if, if, if the chancellor was, you know, uh, was in that position, had applied for that position. So for me, it's very confusing to know what the hiring process is when through our BAM task force, which is our budget allocation model. I've asked several times whether our district itself is following its own staffing request process, uh, dated 2019 through 2022, and I, I got blank stares. You know, essentially, no, it's not, because it's supposed to go through a four-step process, even for administrative new hires. I don't think that happened for the deputy chancellor position. I don't think it happened for the college, um, director of financial aid positions. Um, you know, so as the teachers and as the faculty are coming on, you know, sharing their concerns, I have those true, those same concerns, because I've heard the faculty asking for a different way of doing things for several years. I know that our engineers and custodians are deeply, um, you know, lacking staffing to address the issues district-wide. Classified, we had us, we did have a staffing shortage. We had over two hundred and something hourly's, um, you know, three or four years ago, um, because the district, you know, and the district decided to let them go, where we've been hovering around, you know, sixty, sixty-five, seventy. So there's, you know, a real lack of support for our, our permanent classified staff. All the while, all the while, administrators are getting hired. They're getting hired. These four new director posi, positions of finance rate at the campuses, um, are, I imagine, are well over four hundred thousand, so they're approaching half a million dollars. Now, now on the agenda is, is yet another hire for a director of financial aid at the district. There is no financial aid staff at the district, right? There's supposed to be, but I think they actually have consultants doing that type of work right now. So it's all, it's, it's a crumbling, uh, I'm sorry, it's, 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 the processes are out of whack, the processes are out of whack, conversations are not taking place. It is business as usual, and it's not working.
Thank you, Richard. We now have Mary Virginia Watson.
Hi, my name's, uh, Mary Virginia. I'm a Oakland resident, a proud product of Community College. I'm, I, you know, I have to say, I'm really disappointed at the lack of vision and the leadership of Peralta Community College District and a real failure to recognize the moment that we're in. Um, we are facing a huge labor shortage. Um, I come out of the healthcare sector most recent, recently. We have one in five healthcare workers leaving their jobs. Um, we have a huge teacher shortage. We have twenty-five percent of working people report wanting to retrain. Seventeen percent, according to McKinsey, will be forced to retrain by 2025. This seems like a real moment for community college, right? Um, Peralta Community College could be really poised to scoop up these students and fulfill its mission. Instead, we have this backwards policy, this backwards-looking policy that really causes harm and real, um, real harm and suffering to students and faculty. The faculty who have moved heaven and earth to retrain and restructure their courses to go online during the pandemic are being repaid for their efforts with a slap in the face. When the community's PCCD is supposed to serve, um, are going to need community colleges the most, the board is now laying off their neighbors and denying them the opportunity, opportunities for career advancement that they rely on Peralta for. And the East Bay, you know, as a whole, is gonna ultimately lose out on the economic regeneration that PCCD is supposed to provide, and that PCCD frankly has the money, the tax dollars, sitting around, um, to provide. And, and that gets me to my last point, is that there is just no reason for all of this suffering. Uh, when I heard about these cuts, I assumed it was because of budget cuts. But it's not. There are no budget cuts. The district has the money to think proactively, and instead, PCCD is shirking that responsibility. Um, that's why, you know, I wanted to speak up on this meeting and call on PCCD to be a leader in the return to the classroom that we'll be seeing across the country as we open up after the pandemic. I'm really disappointed that instead of doing that, we're going to be feeding those students into private, for-profit diploma mills, and that's gonna further drive the communities of color that PCCD is supposed to serve, and especially women, um, into further debt. Um, so I really call on the board to pick up the torch and become leaders on community college. We're going to see a, a historic need for retraining, um, in our area and across the country, and we could, like the East Bay so often is, become leaders on this really important issue that is a social justice issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Virginia. We now have Robert Tyndall with us, and I believe that is the last speaker for tonight.
Thank you. Um, hi, everyone. It's been quite a thing to listen to the presentations tonight. And, um, to introduce myself, I was fortunate to be hired at Merritt College, um, recently, right at the beginning of COVID. And I have a lot of experience as an online teacher, and so I was also privileged to be asked to create an online program for the ESL department. We didn't even know if we could do it. Who knows if you can teach ESL online? But we did it, and not only did we do it, I have twenty students on my waitlist this semester. Twenty. Twenty. Our program is remarkably successful, and part of this is because we've been outreach-ing. Now, I heard the term "growth mindset" named a while back. And I believe that we have been making a difference in students' lives because we've been bringing that growth mindset to our school. We know the students are out there. We've been outreach-ing. We've been putting up flyers and markets. We've been connecting with people. We've been growing, because we just chose to do it. Now, um, I know what it's like to be cannon fodder. I've taught for over 20 years, and every semester is again, you know, a kind of white-knuckle experience of will I be able to pay for my family for another semester? Can I keep making a difference in my students' lives if I'm not supported and demoralized? Because I'm treated by cannon fodder. But I continue doing it because I love to teach. I'm passionate about what I do. And so I want to remind you all, when the proposed cuts came down, I heard numbers, but I saw faces. I saw faces of my ESL students who are non-credit, and again, we're talking about equity. Well, these are people who are just hanging on right now. Many of them cannot afford to go to community college. And so what we're offering to them through online instruction is a very valuable entry into our society. And I believe that is what the vocation of an educator actually is. So please remember, there are faces there, and there are 20 people on my waitlist waiting.
Sorry, ten seconds. Sorry about that.
That's all I have to say. Remember those faces. They're out there. Let's bring them in. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. And that concludes our public comment for the evening.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. And thank you for all who showed up tonight, and let us know what's on your mind and your thoughts. All of that information is important to us. Let us move on to 3.12 Chancellor's Reports. I'll get this to you, Chancellor Jackson.
President Reese.
Thank you. I-
I'm, I'm sorry, Chancellor Jackson. Trustee Gonzalez, you in?
I realize that, that being open comment, public comment, we can't get into substantive discussion, but I did want to point out to the public that the board has enrollment management workshop that we'll be engaged in in several weeks. There'll be public notice. And I really want to encourage people to come, participate, watch, help inform the board, and help the board have a dialogue that engages in these issues. It's usually not the board's role to get into details of enrollment management, but in setting policy direction, we're going to get a good overview and try to get facts straight about what's happening and why decisions are made. So it's not that the board is not listening. The board is paying very careful attention to these issues, and it's agendized for a meeting very soon in April. So anyway, I just, I wanted people to get, we're, we're paying attention. We really are. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor.
Thank you, Trustee Gonzalez. I was going to make that announcement myself. The Enrollment Academy is being scheduled for April the 21st. The first part of the meeting, the board will be getting some mandatory training, or we may flip it and do the training and the discussion on enrollment management. And we will discuss FTEs. We will discuss strategies. We will talk about some of the things that we're already doing to minimize the impact that the reduction is having on our staff and on our community. But this is, again, not the forum for us to do that. I did want to have the presidents to speak, and I'll start out with Merritt College, Dr. Johnson, to be followed by Berkeley City College, and then Laney College, and then last, College of Alameda. So with that, I'll turn it over to President Johnson.
Thank you, Chancellor. Good evening, President Napoleone Rees, Board of Trustees, colleagues, and community members. This is the report from Merritt College. Just want to start by saying that we're proud to announce, Merritt College is proud to announce that we've been awarded the California Apprenticeship Initiative Grant for New and Innovative Programs. And we got that from the Workforce and Economic Development Division of the State Chancellor's Office. The grant award is for, it's a very specific number, $416,509. I don't know how they settled on 509, but it's 509, $416,509. And that's going to be used to strengthen our cybersecurity apprenticeships and increase access to digital literacy for underserved and underrepresented communities. And I'm just going to keep my remarks, remarks brief tonight. Secondly, and this is a name you've heard before, but I'm pleased to share with you that Ms. Pamela Samuels has been selected as the 2022 Coca-Cola Academic Team Gold Scholar, and as a result, will receive a $1,500 scholarship. Now, Ms. Samuels is the president of our 5th Acapulco Chapter here at Merritt, and she plans to transfer to a four-year university in the fall. I know that because I've written several recommendations and reference letters to some very prestigious colleges, and we'll just wait. That's her news to share, but we'll, we'll happily herald that once she gets in. Just a little bit about the, the scholarship, the foundation sponsors, the Academic Team Award by recognizing 50 gold, silver, and bronze scholars. So she was one of 150. And there is going to be a, she's going to be honored and recognized at both the national and statewide ceremonies and, and at the PTK Annual Convention, which is going to be held in Denver, Colorado, April 7th to April 9th. And you may recall, as I said earlier, that last year, she was named the 2021 Coca-Cola Leaders of Promise Scholar. So we just want to congratulate her as well. In closing, and it's ironic, because he entered a letter this evening. I wanted to give a shout-out to the National History and Sustainability NHS Program, and that is under the leadership of Brad Belugian and instructors such as Ben Nelson. Brad serves as the faculty manager over that program. And several of the students just recently completed the curriculum and secure positions in the environmental sector. I'm just going to just, a couple of the positions they've gotten. Jaclyn Caldwell is now Park Interpreter at Santa Clara County Parks. Ryan Jones is a Park Ranger with East Bay, Rio Park District. We got Alan Aki, who is a meter-reader mechanic for East Bay Mud, and Rebecca Davis, who is now working as an interpretive student aide at the Ardenwood Historic Farm. So a little earlier, people asked, like, what are we doing to promote programs and, and, and do outreach? I wanted to, hopefully, Maisha, this works, because this is about a minute and 40 seconds, I want you guys to see, of one of our students from the NHS program, Ronique Curry. She did an amazing job of putting this video together that gives you everything you want to know about our Natural History and Sustainability Program. So Maisha, hit it.
Okay, I will. And you guys, give me a thumbs up if you hear everything okay.
All right, all right. So I just want to congratulate her again for such a wonderful job on that. And just, and just, just on a personal note, I just take a personal, personal point of privilege. I appreciate the, the comments by the Chancellor and Trustee Gonzalez, you in? We are listening, as presidents. We do take seriously enrollment management as a part-time, long-time, part-time. I don't like to say adjunct, because that suggests that the person's value is ancillary, which is not. So I was a part-time employee, part-time faculty member myself, so I understand what it is to have a class canceled. I understand that's $5,000, $6,000 out of somebody's pocket that, you know, was, was maybe meant for something else. So it's, it's not, and we also understand the impact of, that it has on students canceling classes. So we don't do it lightly. I know at Merritt, about a third of our classes have enrollment under 20, so we're not just, you know, just wildly canceling classes. We're trying to do it with, with a, with a, with a bit of circumspection. But I look forward to the conversation we're going to have about that soon, and that is a report from Merritt College.
I think BCC-
I'm so sorry. I don't know why I was having such difficulty. Good evening. Buenas tardes. Good evening, President Napoleone Rees, Dr. Jackson, trustees, colleagues, and community members. In addition to the board report provided in your packet, I'd like to highlight a few items. Berkeley City College has been in a year-long self-evaluation, revision, and confirmation process for our work in participatory governance. Since our accreditation site visit last spring, we have been diligently working to gather collective input and to codify our processes for evaluation. Starting with a participatory governance retreat in June of last year, 2021, where all governance chairs and co-chairs came together to plan a year-long review process. In the fall, each committee reviewed its charge, its membership, and role in providing input to the decision-making process at Berkeley City College. The College Roundtable has been receiving these updates and has been endorsing the committee reports and revisions to our college participatory governance manual. And we are preparing to launch the survey evaluation to every committee member in a participatory governance committee. Now, one of the most revisions, most recent revisions happened just yesterday at College Roundtable, where the members of the Roundtable unanimously supported to implement the Classified Senate President as a tri-chair for this committee, joining the Academic Senate President and the College President. I am proud to be working alongside faculty, classified professionals, students, and administrators to ensure that we are transparent and inviting of all constituency voices in our participatory governance processes. I know that sometimes this work is not the most exciting. However, I think that it is. This is such critical work to the fabric of our community engagement and a cornerstone for accreditation excellence and achieving equitable student outcomes. I would also like to share exciting news of the ongoing presentations throughout the BCC campus regarding the progress and status of our new building on Millvia Street. We are on track for timely completion and meeting every design-build process milestone, thanks to colleagues in the Department of General Services, our colleagues at Kitchell AECOM, and the BCC faculty, classified professionals, students, administrators, who've participated in the building user group meetings, and also because of the work of this Board of Trustees. Your steadfast commitment to ask the hard questions and support capital improvement projects, it doesn't go unnoticed. So on behalf of the BCC community, I want to thank you for all that you do to support our colleges and expanding the way that we support students. Last week, I had the opportunity to join the Women's Leadership Club for their community event focused on women's history, "Time for Healing and Hope." It was remarkable to see the level of engagement, knowledge sharing, and deep reflections about the intersectionality that is present amongst our female-identified community. As a point of personal privilege and on behalf of the Berkeley City College community, I would like to express my appreciation for all female-identified colleagues and leaders on our college campuses, our district spaces, our Board of Trustees, for sharing your gifts, times, and talents with the Peralta community. We honor you not only during Women's History Month, but throughout the year. And in closing, I just want to echo comments that colleagues have shared regarding collective opportunity to engage enrollment management. And like, like President Johnson, and I'm sure my, my fellow president colleagues, we all look forward to the opportunity to become a part of the solution together. This concludes my remarks for this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, Chancellor Jackson, President Napoleone Rees, members of the governing board, colleagues in education, valued students, and, and community members. I'd like to begin my report this evening by extending special thanks to Professor Alicia Caballero Christensen, who serves, who has served in her first year at Laney College as the tenure facilitator. And along with that gratitude, I'd like to congratulate our faculty who were granted tenure. Professors Dana Grisby, Adam Balogh, Elizabeth Cowan, Robert Crowley, Erfan Ortak, Nick Shaposhnikov, Beth Waddell, and Professor Tiffany Wu. At Laney College, we look forward to celebrating the tenure in, that they've achieved in May, and will be working in collaboration with Professor Caballero Christensen to put on the event. And just want to extend special appreciation to her and her first year in that role. Also, in the spirit of speaking about accomplishments, I want to extend congratulations, and it seems to be almost a regular part of my report, but the Peralta citizen has again received recognition. This time, they've won the Society of Professional Journalists James Madison Freedom of Information Award. The news was received during Sunshine Week, which highlights freedom of information in government. Students will be honored with a trophy that will live in Professor Lenny Gastus Newsroom as a reminder of the citizen's commitment and future work at Peralta. In addition to that award, they also picked up several others at the Journalism Association of Community Colleges Associate Collegiate Press Conference they attended last week in Long Beach. Specifically, the winners were Ivan Chariz for photo essay, David Rowe for profile feature story, Derek Sylvester for column writing, Letizia Luna for video journalism, and Pamela Rudd for news story. I hope you will join all of us at Laney College in congratulating the students for their gumption, integrity, and talent. Speaking of great things happening, there were a number of activities, really, with Laney College reaching out to the community over the past couple of weeks. On March 9th, I hosted my first-ever coffee on the quad. And while that was a great event and people turned up and, and got caffeinated, what was even greater was that a group of 18 prospective students, funded by Employment Services, as well as the Vocational English as a Second Language and Social Adjustment Grant. As part of those activities, they visited our campus. And I'd like to thank Professor Laura Espino of the Adult Education Office, as well as Raya Zaya with the Employment Services Department. Additionally, today, thanks to the work of Raya Zaya, as well as Minerva Perez and Beth Waddell and others, Laney College welcomed 55 Latinx high school students from our McLeimans High School partner. And it was great to see them on the quad and make my best attempt to welcome them and, and, and speak to them in Spanish today. So that was wonderful. But the one thing I'd like to close my report with tonight is to kind of share part two of a story with you. One of the traditions we've had at Laney College has been our one-stop Saturday. And last fall, you may recall that we tried to promote our late-start classes, essentially with a one-stop enrollment event on campus. And I was happy to report to you that we had somewhere between 20 and 30 students. Well, this time, we had it again, and we did it as a hybrid event. And had it been, you know, 40 students, I would have said awesome and great. But we had 125 students turn up on our campus on March 16th. And again, we had some partnership here. We couldn't have done it without McLeim- Um, and again, we had some partnership here. We couldn't have done it without, uh, McClyman's and Went West High Schools, uh, bringing groups of students to our campus, which was absolutely wonderful. In total, between that and the, um, the online event that President Bilal Hamran told you about earlier, the day saw at least 200 students, uh, come to these events, uh, to get the assistance they need, needed learning about programs and receiving additional support. There's so many people to thank, um, especially our food services team, uh, Canetta Roberts, who helped with facilities in terms of setting things up. If something happens on our campus with an outreach or welcome event, it's, you'll be sure to find Ms. Hope Lane uh, at the forefront of it. In addition to that, um, we also got incredible assistance from the custodial team at Laney College, our counselors, our I T's, uh, team, enrollment services, financial aid, staff in the welcome center, admissions and records. And in the spirit of doing this mid semester, we had a strong turnout from our tutoring and supplemental, um, instruction colleagues that came. And just want to say that really this was an event that was a success, but it was a success because of partnership. Partnership with O U S D partners and a partnership across Laney College with our faculty, our classified professionals and our administrators who turned out together to really serve our community. And I'd like to send, even though this is kind of an internal thing, um, I'd like to send special appreciation to our classified senate as well as our, uh, classified union steward Alejandro Acosta. Because in the midst of that, within that week, uh, they did the very important work of doing resource prioritization for our classified hiring. And I know that's a small thing, but it was, it took a lot of work and I'm, and it was a big thing for Laney College. So with all of that said, um, I also would like to take just a moment of personal privilege and say, as, you know, as a former part-time faculty member myself, um, I certainly understood and heard a lot of what was said tonight. And I too look forward to the discussions, uh, continuing about enrollment management. This week, we, we rolled out over 80 late starting sections. And as we look at our enrollment, um, while our, while like a lot of community colleges in the state, our enrollment numbers are down. Our F T S is actually up about 2% resident from what it was a year ago. And I think what that tells me as, as a college president at Laney is that we are following guided pathways. Our students are now, even though there are fewer of them, they're taking more units. And that's something that is really an accomplishment, um, among all of us and, and, and not just in instruction, but in student services, administrative services and everything we do. And with that, I'll close my report for this evening.
Good evening, President Reese, trustees, Chancellor Jackson, colleagues and community members. I'm delighted to provide this report for the College of Alameda. As you may recall, advancing diversity, equity, inclusion and accessibility is one of C O A's strategic institutional priorities. In supporting this priority, our commitment and our commitment to equitable student success, C O A has joined 68 other California community colleges in participating in the second, um, USC, um, California Community College Race Equity Leadership Alliance. This year, the alliance programming officially began this month and continues its important work that was started last year. Implementing impact solutions to equity challenges on our college campuses. The alliances provide member colleges with resources, training and annual assessment aimed at improving equity and diversity outcomes. The, um, racial equity leadership alliance is headed by USC's Provost and Professor of Management and Operations, Dr. Sean Harper. College of Alameda will send 10 employees to each online monthly session over the course of 12 months. However, all College of Alameda employees will have access to these resources through the online portal that is provided as part of the membership. Additionally, we will be administering the, um, race equity climate survey, which is also made available to alliance members in the September or October timeframe. Our accessible program hosted the second virtual session in its career panel series on Thursday, March 3rd. Students heard from panelists with careers in science, technology, engineering and math. The panel discussion was co-hosted by the, um, by C O A's Math Engineering Science Achievement or Mesa Program. Panelists included Oak Ridge National Laboratory Tech Professional Material Research, researcher Alexis Flores Bentoncourt, Amgen Incorporated Process Development Scientist Miguel Gomez, S C Solutions Incorporated Senior Engineer Michael Perez and Autodex Senior Data Scientist Yezel Viscara. The panelists recounted their own educational, uh, career journeys, provided career advice and answered students' questions. The next sessions will take place on April 7th, which will focus on vocation careers and the final session will take place on May 5th and focus on the medical field. On February the 25th, members of our, um, guided pathways team participated in a California Guided Pathway 2.0 Initiative Workshop entitled, uh, operationalizing the big idea of guided pathways with a design and implementation framework. Our participants included our acting B P I, Dr. Diana Borami, and our Director of, um, College Research and Planning, Dominique Bruna Vitez, as well as I attended. The workshop explored ways that college can design and implement improved student experiences under a guided pathways framework using an equity lens by exploring approaches that enhances a student's sense of connection, belonging and validation. I would also like to indicate that I, along with the other college presidents, attended the 2021 C L C CEO Leadership Symposium in San Diego, um, a few weeks back. The CEO Symposium is an annual convening of the California Community Colleges Chancellor, Superintendent and President from across the state. The statewide convening of CEOs facilitated information dissemination and discussion regarding important topics such as beyond COVID-19 prioritizing diversity, equity and inclusion, remaining, um, reimagining the future through fiscal policy lens, looking at, um, proposed changes to the student centered funding form and a conversation with the state chancellor, um, Eloy Oakley Ortiz. So in closing, one of the other, um, priorities of our college is that around, um, strategic enrollment management. You've heard that we are very much looking forward to engaging in taking this matter on and studying it even, even further. I would also like to, uh, remind us that this is ongoing work. We, many of us participated in an enroll, strategic enrollment management, um, work, um, last term. We've also hired consultants. We are very, very committed and very serious about taking a very, very data-driven approach to finding creative solution to very, very challenging prob, problems that have implications in terms of the changing demographics, changing technology, changing fiscal realities. So please know and understand that the leadership of the district hardly hear you and take these matters into serious consideration and are trying to come up with the best solution that balances the multiplicity of complex issues and concerns. So that ends my report for this evening. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you, presidents, and thank you, the board, for listening to our updates. I'll turn it back over to President Napoleon Bellarriese.
Great. Um, yes, I'll echo that same sentiment. Thank you, President, for your update. It's always wonderful to hear what grants you're applying for, what grants you've gotten. The symposiums that are happening, how Flex Day is going and how your accreditation processes are coming along, even beyond the visit, moving towards institutional excellence at each of the colleges. And also, of course, how great the N H S program is doing too at merit. All of that wonderful stuff has been fantastic to continually hear every two weeks. Excuse me. Let's move on to 4.1, public hearing. So this is the public hearing. This being the time and date noticed, the Board of Trustees will now convene a public hearing to receive public comments regarding the P F T's initial proposal for collective bargaining agreement with the Peralta Community College District for 2022 labor negotiations. Gavel in. Have we received any requests to speak or is there anyone present who wishes to comment regarding this topic? Sasha, Maisha?
I don't see any hands raised. Are there any amongst those in the attendees that would like to speak to this matter? Don't see any hands raised.
Okay. As there are no comments, I will declare the public hearing closed. Thank you. Gavel out. All right. Let's move on to 4.2 or 5.1, I'm sorry, sunshining labor contracts. And I will hand this over to Ms. Epps, Director of Employee Relations and Diversity Programs.
Yes, thank you. Uh, greetings to the board as well as the chancellor. These items come before the board under Government Code Section 3547, the Educational Employment Relations Act, which requires that the district and its unions, that before the district and its unions may begin negotiations on successor agreements, that each party present its initial proposals for public review and comment. This process is often referred to as sunshining. Um, I am presenting the district's initial proposals and a public hearing will be held at the April 12th Board Meeting for Public Input and Comment before bargaining begins. The district proposes reopening negotiations with P F T, uh, with the following initial proposal, which includes 17 items. Those are included in the file attachment. Um, I will briefly go through the 17 items, um, or articles that, um, we would like to propose for modification. Article six, article 11, 14A, article 18, article 19, article 21B, as well as appendix A and C, article 22, article 26, article 30, article 33, article 34, article 35. Um, and then a new proposed inclusion, which is a section, uh, regarding a no-strike provision, which is not currently in the agreement. Um, additionally, we would like to propose cleaning up and updating some of the appendices and also reviewing all of the side letters and M O Us to make sure that they incorporate up-to-date, uh, language and also see if there's a way to, um, combine these into the collective bargaining agreement. Lastly, the 17th item would be to update the pay penalty side letter to reflect terms that are fair, reasonable and sustainable. Uh, that constitutes the initial proposal for P F T. You'll notice that as I'm presenting the, uh, proposals to reopen negotiations with, uh, S C I U as well as Local 39, that there is some, uh, overlap across the units in terms of the proposed modifications. Um, for the, um, reopening negotiations with the following initial 13 proposals for the permanent employees collective bargaining agreement or S C I U, uh, we would be looking to modify article 14, 5, 6, 9, 10, 11, 13, 14, 17, 21, 22, 28 and appendix four. Uh, the district proposes to also reopen negotiations with the following initial seven proposals for the hourly employees collective bargaining agreement. And those articles include modifications to article three, article four, article eight, article nine, article 14, article 18 and article 19. Um, lastly, we are proposing to reopen negotiations with the initial 12 proposals for the collective bargaining agreement with Local 39 for a successor agreement for the 22 through 25 year for regular employees. And you'll notice that also these echo, uh, some of the priorities that were identified in the other proposed modifications, uh, to generate some uniformity. And so we're proposing modifications or the sunshining of article three, eight, nine, 10, 15, 18, 19, 22, 24, 25, 26 and appendix five. Lastly, we're going to propose, uh, reopening negotiations with the following initial six proposals for the hourly employees collective bargaining agreement for Local 39. And those, uh, six will be article three, article nine, article 13, article 14, article 18 and, uh, appendix two. Um, as I indicated, there is some uniformity across the three different, um, proposed modifications. And, um, we will be having the public hearing at the regularly scheduled board meeting on April 12th.
Thank you, Director Epps.
Thank you.
Do I have any questions from anyone? Seeing none. All right. Let's move on to 5.2. 2021-22 Annual District Audit Report. And I will call on, uh, David Robidek from C L A.
Before David begins, I'd just like to say, um, I thank you for being patient with us today. I had given him a timeframe, uh, and I know we're a little past that time, but thank you, um, David. And, um, this is, the item is really in two parts. The first part is a presentation that David's going to give us right now from C L A. And then under item 11.4, action item is really the acceptance of the full report, uh, which will come at a later time. So with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Robidek.
And I also can share the screen if you'd rather, um, me do so.
You know, I, I, I can, I can do that real. Thank you. So I have that in front of me. Um, and thank you, Dr. Jackson. Um, and no need to apologize for the timing. Many, many such board meetings and have become accustomed to, um, being patient and I enjoy being invited. So very much appreciate that. David Robidek here, I'm a partner with Clifton Larson Allen. We are the external auditors. Um, we did a, a presentation similar to this, um, um, just, um, a week ago to, uh, certain members of, of the board as well as executive leadership. So I'm going to hit the highlights. Um, and, uh, leave it to questions in the event, um, you'd like, uh, more, more conversation around it. External audit is made up of three components. It's the audit of the financial statements, it's your assets, liabilities, results of operations and funding is a, a very, uh, significant component of it. But in fact, we, we actually spend more time on the external audit in, in the two other areas, which are federal compliance and, and state compliance in accordance with the chancellor's office, uh, district audit manual. And so you'll see here, we've listed the three federal programs that we were required to audit this year. Student financial aid um, is your largest, uh, federal award cluster. The COVID-19 Higher Education Relief Funds are a new program, um, the last couple of years. And so we audited that. And also research and development, several research and development contracts. Those were also subject to audit. So in terms of audit scopes, uh, this, uh, is about as robust as they get in a, in a community college environment, particularly here in the state of California. So what does that mean? Your, your management team? Um, we, we start that in April and concluded that here in, in March. And there is a lot of effort on both parts, but certainly with the district's student financial aid group, compliance group, and financial, financial, financial accounting group. So would like to note the appreciation for the effort that they all put in in helping move this external audit along. It is definitely an undertaking. We presented a few slides. I know this was shared as part of the agenda. I'm going to hit maybe a highlight on each page. First, you do have a clean, unmodified opinion on those financial statements. What that means is that the financial statements that you're seeing here are materially accurate. So it's the highest level of assurance you could get from an external audit firm on financial statements. I listed here a few highlights of the financial statements. The Management's Discussion Analysis at the beginning of the audit package does a very good job of emphasizing economic outlook and the results. That's drafted by management. Great. If you're only going to read a few pages, that would be where I would spend my time. Couple highlights. Net position, your assets, your total assets increased. Your total liabilities decreased, which means the difference between the two, or your net position, increased fifty-eight million. The last two years in the pandemic have been a challenging time. So increasing net position in any amount is certainly, you know, a positive. Here's a page of Required Governance Communications. I think really a lot of accounting literature here, terminology. I think what's important to note is that there are significant liabilities on your balance sheet and related to post-retirement employment benefits that we promised and committed to, as well as pension liability benefits we promised and committed to. You and along with every other community college in the state of California, in most states. So that is a normal item. Expect to see those, but when you look at your liabilities, that is a significant component of those. And those are estimates that are robust. And so we're required to mention that those are estimates and can fluctuate from year over year and have an impact on your income statement. I mentioned a significant portion of our scope is compliance-related. And here, we presented a trend of the audit findings over the last four years. Clifton Larson Allen or CLA has been doing the audit the last two years, and prior to that, a prior audit firm has been doing them. A couple items to note. Financial statements. So we do issue a report on internal control of our financial reporting and the financial statements. In two thousand and nineteen, you peaked at four findings there. Three of those were material weaknesses. Two thousand and twenty-one, you're down to one, and that's a significant deficiency. So I think you'll notice a positive trend there. Federal compliance. Like I said, we audited three major programs this year. Two of those programs, those federal programs, have not been audited before. This was the first year. We had six student financial aid findings. I will provide some context here. In the following page, we do list out the specifics. These are six of the most common, if not the most common, student financial aid findings that we see. The Department of Ad List, you know, the top ten most common audit findings. And so these, we would find on that list. And student financial aid findings are, in our experience, common, particularly in a large public university or community college district with some decentralized operations. You have four campuses. And so certainly, I, you know, management has identified, you know, the last two years, that a primary root cause of these findings, and many of these findings, is the turnover we've experienced in our student financial aid departments. And so I know there's plans and corrective action to work towards reducing the number of findings. But in total, there's progress. And the number of findings has stabilized. So I think although we do have findings, I hope that context does provide a little, you know, little, I guess, context to the results here. And then here are the specifics of those findings. A lot of acronyms, I apologize. Student financial aid is a technical area. So that, but here are the specifics of them. I will not discuss them in detail unless I'm prompted to. And with that, I will entertain questions from the Board. But in general and overall, this is a large undertaking for a district in the size. And so we very much appreciate the time and attention they provided us. And this report has been finalized and issued and submitted.
Trustees, I know I have a couple of questions, but do I see any questions from any of my trustees?
President Napoleon Bellarys, could I just make a comment?
I'll make comments after you. Yes.
Okay. My comment is, as David indicated, there was a new area that they looked at this year, and there were three recommendations under other. And they were under the CARES and the HERF funding. And you'll notice out of the funds, the significant funds that we received under the federal guidelines of CARES and HERF, there was only an exception of eight thousand two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. I just wanted to point that out, given the amount of funds that we received from the federal government, what cares?
That's a great point. And in total, I've only listed the two findings that any amount of question cost. And I listed them in parentheses. So usually the determination for the federal government in terms of severity of findings, it's certainly a criteria for that is question cost. And so I would put these in the, I wouldn't necessarily, pretty close to the inconsequential threshold when you talk about the millions of dollars that are spent in these federal programs, so.
Then I have a couple of questions. Sorry, let me just get to. So the couple of questions that I have, when you can publicly speak to this, David, is, you know, we looked at this in two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one. These are kind of, you know, a lot of findings. Ten, ten, there really aren't significant deficiencies. Can you give us a sense of how does this compare, given how complex our institution is and these institutions in general? So looking at ten as being part of our audit findings, that is a bit daunting to look at, but can you?
Yes.
Please us of it.
Do I have other clients your size with ten findings? Yes. And as a firm, we do. I think that Dr. Jackson pointed out, I think, you know, we, there were three findings this year that were related to new funding sources that we had previously, and that was HERF. And those funding sources have a couple of requirements around procurement. And that, you know, for a district that doesn't have a lot of non-student financial aid, you know, related federal funding, these were three common, three common findings that we had this year. And so I think if, you know, two years from now, well, you know, I guess we'll speculate how long it takes for our university and college friends to spend the HERF-related dollars. But hadn't it been for HERF, you would likely be looking at eight findings. And so when you're comparing apples to apples, that would be a downward trend. Six, the six, I mean, six out of ten are student financial aid related. And like I said, we don't do many audits at CLA that we don't have any student financial aid findings. And I actually, I have distributed, because these are publicly available, public universities across the country, in different geographies, private colleges with large endowments. And you can see the list of student financial aid findings that they'll have year over year. What we always say is, you know, it's not, if you have them, it's, you know, what's the trend? And I think the last two years, you know, I think we've experienced the new technology, right? The system of implementation and some turnover has made the trend a bit more challenging last two years, but we didn't have an uptick in findings. So that would have been a trend that we wouldn't have wanted to see, but that plateaued. So going forward, it'll be demonstrating, can we improve? But we have public university clients that, you know, will have three findings, and then, you know, down to one, and then two years later, they'll have a little turnover, and they'll be back up to four because of certain roster submissions. So I certainly don't want to de-emphasize, you know, if findings, we wanted, we don't want findings, but to try to contextualize, we have plenty of clients that have them in this amount. And in fact, what's less common are audits where we don't have any student financial aid findings.
Good to hear. And I think the other thing that I would add to that is, given that a cluster or a large proportion of our findings have been in student financial aid, I think it is very important to affirm and confirm once again that we have now actually hired financial directors, both at district level and at the colleges, to help with this particular large cluster of findings.
Yeah.
Just one last question, because if people don't understand what it means, you're finding ten suspension and debarment sounds also pretty intimidating. So can you just kind of give us a very simplistic definition?
If I could write the requirements myself, I would probably select different language. Yes, I'm glad you pointed that out. The federal government requires us to test whether the district can evidence that they performed a check that a vendor was not suspended or debarr'd prior to issuing a purchase order, entering into transaction with that vendor. Our understanding is that, and the policy is written, that we at the district do perform that check prior to engaging with a vendor. And, but ultimately, the documentation of that, of that check was not evidenced or maintained. So they weren't able to populate it for our testing, but the policy is written that that check is done. So simply maintaining that documentation going forward would resolve that finding. And we did verify, so did management, that we are in fact, none of the items that we selected were vendors that were suspended or debarr'd, that they were not suspended or debarr'd by the federal government. So those are the kinds of rigor that the federal government requires us to test. So just to put this into some context, in the student financial aid findings, again, twenty-three thousand dollars of outstanding refund checks, that's the only question cost amount. The rest of them are, did we report on time or timely, status changes, roster submissions? As you'd imagine, there is a lot of activity that goes into complying with Title IV regulations. And if you skip A beat, or have some turnover, it can have an impact. And so that's what we're seeing.
Thank you. Trustees, your last opportunity for any questions or clarifications.
Thank you, David. Appreciate your time.
Yes, thank you, David. Right. Let's move on to five point three. Other post-employment benefit bonds payment plan update. And I'm going to call on Vincent McCarley and David Olson.
Again, if you would like for me to share my screen for the presentation, please let me know.
Yes, please. Chancellor, do you have any opening remarks you'd like to make?
Chancellor, you're muted. Or maybe there are no opening remarks.
Well, thank you very much. And good evening, everyone. My name is Dave Olson. Vincent and I spoke with you last meeting about a recent rating action by Moody's Investor Service. Today, we're here to talk about the OPEB bond payment plan. We'd like, we plan on making a presentation in a couple of weeks about issuing the next series of general obligation bonds under Measure G. I'd say that the three issues are related, at least in certain ways. They all have to do with the capital markets. They each have an impact on each other, and I can talk a little bit about that later. And they're all cases where we believe that a commitment to pursuing best practices in a determined and consistent way can have clear benefits to the district and can save the district money and the district's taxpayers' money in significant amounts. So today, we're here to talk about the OPEB bond payment plan. Let's take a look at the next slide. Tonight's presentation, we're going to do three things. We're going to provide a summary of the program. What was the original plan? What was the logic behind that plan? What has changed over the last fifteen-plus years? They've been dealing with this for a long time, and what we've been trying to do since our two thousand and nineteen review and recommendations. The second thing is, we want to provide the Board with the district's OPEB bond payment plan for two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three, as we're required to do each year. How much is coming due for payment? What are the sources that we recommend making payments from? Finally, we're going to talk about what, how the specific plan was designed, and what are the benefits versus the alternatives. We obviously live in a world of limited resources, and there are other good uses for any of the money that we're going to end up using to make these OPEB bond payments. But we want to make sure that everyone understands that every dollar that we don't take from a recommended source has to come from a different resource. So it's about making choices. Next slide. Start with a few definitions. Other post-employment benefits. When we talk about these, we're talking about benefits earned by past employees and paid out to them after they retire. So the district promises employees, particularly in pre-two thousand and five, that they would make insurance payments on their behalf once they retired. And those are benefits that are earned and paid later. Second definition is OPEB benefit payments. Those are the actual payments that get made to retirees. So those are still going on in significant amounts. Vince is going to talk about the payment this year under those programs. At this point, those are being made from trust one. So the OPEB benefit payments are being made from trust one. Those are different than the third definition there, the OPEB bond payments. The OPEB bond payments are made every year to investors. So back in two thousand and five, the district issued these OPEB bonds, put the monies aside in a trust fund, used that trust fund to make these OPEB bond, or the OPEB benefit payments, and swapped out for the OPEB bond payments. Let's look at the next slide to kind of talk about how that plan developed. I think most of you are familiar with it, but I know there's some new board members, and I know it's complicated. So I always like to go through it every time we address the payments. The problem was, in the early two thousands, these OPEB benefit costs were going up dramatically. And the district faced, you know, a real challenging financial situation, but also wanted to make payments to make good on the promise it has made to employees in the past. And so the solution was to issue bonds in two thousand and five, or I guess there's a two-part solution. The first was to limit benefits to new employees, people hired after two thousand and four. Then to issue bonds in two thousand and five, to use the borrowed money to pay those costs that were going up unpredictably, and to pay off the bonds over the same period of time, but in a more predictable and gradually escalating payment structure. It seemed attractive at the time, because the district could, those payments, the district could establish the payments that they wanted to take on through the bonds. Those were a little bit more affordable, and they were definitely more predictable. And they increased at about four percent a year, which seemed reasonably attractive, given the ten percent plus increases in annual healthcare costs. Between two thousand and five and two thousand and nineteen, the district, you know, had the challenges you would take, you would imagine, in making these, in making these payments during the Great Recession, other disruptions in the financial market, solutions were put into place. The repayment plan got a little bit more complicated. And when we came in in two thousand and nineteen, you know, we made the recommendation that we have a simpler plan that is more well-communicated. So this presentation this year is part of an annual presentation that we're required to give under a resolution approved by the Board two years ago to describe the current status of the program, to make a recommendation of making next year's payments, and to answer any questions that the Board has. Let's take a look at the next slide. And on this, we'll go to Vincent to describe the payments, where they're coming from, and why.
On this page, we basically represent the outstanding OPEB bonds. Again, that's other post-employment benefit bonds that were issued originally in two thousand and five. As noted, there's also has been several times where the district has restructured those bonds or deferred some of those payments. There's basically three categories to the OPEB bonds. There's a portion that remains of the original two thousand and five bonds, and those were issued in a series of six tranches. And right now, there remains tranche B3, B4, B5, and B6. And B3 is the currently active tranche that's outstanding, of which the district is making payments on. These bonds were structured as variable rate bonds, which were synthetically converted to fix by an interest rate swap. And that swap is with Morgan Stanley. And with the exception of the 2004 tranche, those other series of tranches are what are called capital appreciation bonds. So payments are not currently being made on those, but the interest is accreting on those each period. And so you're reflected there is the amount that's outstanding. And that's the accretive value as of August of 2021. And the payment on that portion is a little over, almost $12 million coming up in this next fiscal year. The second piece is the 2006 bonds, which were a part of a restructuring. And that basically restructured some maturities that were occurring between 2006 and 2009 and pushed those payments out into the future. And then there was the 2011 bonds, which was also a refunding and restructuring of a portion of the debt as well. Next page, please. This is a graphic representation of the payments that are to be made. And as you can see here, the final payment is not until 2049. And it basically, the payments will escalate until roughly about and then start to decline and then gradually rise until you get back out to 2049. Again, this is just a graphical representation of what the current debt structure is for payment on those OPEB bonds. Next page. Historically, the district has made payments for SOPI bonds from four different sources. And the bulk of this is basically coming from the general fund, but categorized in different subcategories. The first, the dedicated OPEB appropriation, which is roughly about 7.5% of payroll costs. That in the district's previous deliberations decided that it would set aside roughly about 7.5% each year of its payroll costs for helping to cover some of the costs related to its OPEB bonds. And that could be used either to pay debt service directly on the OPEB bonds or to push monies into a reserve fund. A supplemental appropriation for OPEB, and again, that again would come from, you know, the general fund of the district. Draws from the Special Reserve Fund, which I, you know, previously mentioned. And again, that reserve is funded initially by the general fund. But sometimes it builds up a little bit of a reserve there to catch unforeseen, you know, circumstances or if, you know, you know, other monies were not available. Then finally draws on Trust Fund One. And Trust Fund One was originally funded by proceeds of the 2005 bonds plus additional contributions from the district's general fund as was the way it has been originally funded. Plus, it also has investment earnings that have accumulated within Trust One. And under certain conditions, the district is able to draw on Trust One to pay principal to the extent that there is determined to be a surplus in the liability versus the asset that occurs there. Review and analysis, as Dave mentioned, we tried to do a very thorough review of the debt obligation and the way the district was managing its program in 2019 when we came on board. And we came to a number of different conclusions, which we shared with the board members.
Vincent, I think we need to be on the next slide if we can.
Okay.
All right, great.
There we go. Thank you. One is that the district had a history of deferring its payments on these obligations by restructuring the debt or doing refundings to, again, provide relief to the general fund or funding its debt payments with one-time sources. And those practices were in odds with the original plan, the original 2005 plan. But obviously, in the board's wisdom, decided that it needed to make certain sacrifices in regards to its budgeting. And as David mentioned, there had been a number of events that have occurred within the financial markets between the original issuance of the bonds and the plan that was put in place in 2005 to today. As you know, the Great Recession, there's been, you know, tremendous changes followed to the stock market, interest rate market and the like. In addition to more recently, our pandemic. Also, we reviewed the 2019 FICMA report, and there were some recommendations that were made within that report in relation to the OPEB bonds. At that point in time, roughly, the OPEB bonds were taking about 10% of the district's general fund. And again, that percentage was to grow gradually. But again, a significant portion. And again, the overall plan was complex. And what we thought it would be very helpful would be if we could try to simplify the plan so there could be a better understanding, not only among the board, but obviously with staff and for the community as well. We created a recommended OPEB payment strategy, which was adopted by the board, basically to continue to fund or to budget and appropriate for the OPEB payments to increase the supplemental appropriation each year to try to lessen the need to look to one-time sources. And we felt there was a need to formalize and define what would be considered a surplus relative to Trust One. Prior to that time, there had been no procedure or process in place. And so again, we made some recommendations and the board acted upon that unanimously to put that in place. And that's the resolution that I think is also included within your packet. Next page. Which is the resolution that I just referred to. Next page, please.
One more.
Okay. And again, this process was put in place as Dave described. It said that we would come back to the board each year, make an annual presentation, update the board as far as what its obligations are, what has, you know, the plan going for it relative to making payment obligations and as well as any potential requests to the retirement board relative to Trust One. Next page. On page 10, supplemental value valuation report. And this is regards to the actuarials report for the pre-2004 retiree pool. And I think on your agenda this evening, there were three different actuarial reports that are provided there. Customarily, there would just be two. One for the pre-2004 population and another for the post-2005 population. As a part of the process that we put in place and the board adopted and which was also a part of the FICMA recommendations, there is now a second valuation report relative to the pre-2004 population. And with that report, it sets a discount rate close to what the investment or return may be utilized for a irrevocable trust, which would be similar to your trust two. And the importance of that was that roughly around 2017, Gatsby adopted a new formulation, which was Gatsby 75, which basically said any any revocable trust or trust that was not irrevocable, that you had to use a discount rate that was basically the equivalent of what's called the municipal bond index. And that index is currently around 2.16%. And prior to that point in time, the actuarial report would use a discount rate of close to 7%. We decided that it wasn't a good practice to remain at that higher level. And in 2020, I believe we used a discount rate of 6.3%. And again, consistent with the practice used for or the discount rate for trust two that the district has. On the next page, determination of surplus. We basically look at the valuation of the funds in Trust One. And what we've tried to do is make even dates, since the actuarial reports are done June 30th is the valuation dates to also tie to the value of Trust One as of June 30th of same year. And the value of Trust One at June 30th of 2021 was approximately $224 million. You also see a notation in terms, we bring that forward for, you know, September 30th. And obviously, there's also a valuation as of end of the calendar year. But again, the important item here is as of June 30th, 2021, tying that to the supplemental report from the actuary, which represents an obligation based off of their metrics for the pre-2004 population of 152 million, giving you roughly a surplus amount of approximately 72 million. And again, that is basically the process that we had put in place as a result of a collaborative effort and educational framework that we did with the board members, with staff and as well as consultation with the actuary. On the next page is a proposed or suggested plan relative to budgeting for 2022, 2023 in regards to the OPEB payments. And I like to start from the sources. One, which would be the OPEB appropriation from the general fund of roughly 6.3 million. A supplemental appropriation from the general fund of 3.3 million. Draw from Trust One of 8 billion. And not making any draws from the Special Reserve to basically leave that intact for unforeseen circumstances. And the uses here on the left are basically the expected obligations for this coming fiscal year.
Okay.
With the next page, I'm turning it back to Dave.
All right, great. Thanks, Vincent. So what does that plan look at, look like over the next 10 years? OPEB payments, 17.6 million in 2022-23 are going to increase by about 4% a year. So it's up 600,000, up 700,000, up 800,000 dollars per year. If we continue to make that dedicated appropriation, which hasn't been increasing in recent years as we recommended, and if we're able to increase the supplemental appropriation by about $1 million per year, we will still be able to, we'll be able to decrease the amount drawn by Trust One each and every year. It'll still take 10 years before we are fully paying this with the general fund. But we need to make, even in order to do that, we need to increase our commitment, general fund commitment by about $1 million per year. You can see in the footnote, the amount in the Special Reserve Fund is 6.5 million. It's, you know, that's not even enough to make one year's OPEB trust payment if we don't have access for the OPEB trust for one reason. So it's a, it's a reasonable plan, but it's not perfect, right? What if we can't get to the OPEB trust for whatever reason? There's no surplus would be one example. All of that money needs to come from the general fund unexpectedly. So when you see that Trust One draws column, that's money that if we don't draw from the trust, needs to come from the general fund. Let's look at the next slide. So when we're thinking about the alternatives, there's not that many. We could draw more funds from Trust One, have a big surplus there this year, right? $50 million. We could draw more from Trust One in years in which there's a surplus. Maybe we'd use the additional draws to allow us to put more money in the OPEB Special Reserve. That's not a bad idea. But we've also been telling people that we're going to try to reduce the reliance on Trust One over time. So there's a drawback there. We could increase the general fund commitment, mostly in the supplemental general fund commitment. But that's tough too, right? Increasing the general fund contribution means more cuts to be made or reserves that need to be drawn upon. And we know from our last presentation that that will have a negative impact on the district's flexibility and on the district's credit rate. The third thing we could do is we could increase the Special Reserve Fund commitment. But that doesn't seem wise. It's just $6 million. And that's what you need as your, you know, in the event that you can't fund from Trust One. So that amount should probably be be higher, if anything. So we think our recommendation represents a middle ground here. Trustee, the last bullet, I'm going to say trustee Withrow mentioned something important two weeks ago, which is something that's been on our mind for a long time and what we want to keep having in your mind, the sale of property, the lease of properties. Those aren't straightforward to get done, but they're worth keeping on the table for sure because we've got a lot of payments to go through 2049. Next slide. Last page is just an acknowledgement that these are difficult choices. But unless we make gradual increases from our general fund, we create a, we're looking at a relatively big risk in the event that Trust One's not available. I also wanted to note in this slide that under Resolution 192044 that Vincent mentioned, we have to give the retirement board 30 days' notice of any necessary draw. We're going to ask for 8 million this year under what we're recommending here. And and on the last point, we have a plan here to gradually reduce the reliance on Trust One. We have what we think is a responsible plan to get the general fund paying for all of the OPEB bonds. We can certainly do something different, or you can choose to do something different. But we can't choose something different and say that we are being consistent with this plan. So we'd want to make full board of action of how and why the district is doing something different from this recommendation, if that's the direction you choose to go. So with that, I'll open it up to questions. So with, with that, I'll open it up the questions.
Just with her. Can you hear me? You're muted.
There we go. Thank you very much for the report. Well done. It's, you said it was complicated and to me, that's kind of an understatement. It's a very complicated process. And I've been working on it for, on the retirement board side for a good fifteen years. And I still get my mind and twirled around when I go through the, how they determine the debt. And the fact that we're up to, with the Gatsby side of it, up to two hundred and thirty million dollars. I believe it was a hundred and eighty-five million. And then it was a hundred and, before that, a hundred and sixty million. It, it's, anyway, I don't want to get too far down the line. But these are, these are numbers that this board needs to be very familiar with. They're huge. We have a hundred and forty-eight million dollar revenue base for an organization. And we've got hundreds of millions of dollars here in debt. I do have a question on the, on the value of the, of the bonds. It includes the accredited interest and that sort of thing. But is that in today's dollars? Or is this backed off from two thousand fifty to back, normally you would expect it back about forty-three percent, forty-eight percent.
In response to your, to your question, trustee, those are in today's dollars.
Okay, so it, it's actually moved out over time. It is going to be a little less than, it's still huge.
Yes, yes.
If you go back twenty, twenty-eight years to nineteen ninety-four, the dollar has gone down forty-three percent or something like that, forty-eight percent. Some, some value, doesn't matter what it is, but it is going to be less. What would it be if you, if we went into the market and started buying these bonds back right today?
That, that's, that's a very good question. And I don't, don't want to go into great detail in this public forum. But we have had inquiries from a couple of different investment banks about that potential as a, as an opportunity. And we would need to flush that out a little bit more. And as well as you, you described, look to what sources of funds may be available for that. But that, that may be a, a possibility. Obviously, no investor is going to just, you know, step away at a discounted price. But, you know, it, it may be something, you know, worthwhile for us to continue to, to explore.
Okay. No, that's good. The, the, the district contribution thing that you talked about, they had put money in, but they were using that to put money aside for future paydown of bonds. And they were putting it in there because they could make money with the stock market. Where they couldn't otherwise, if they put it into the bank, you have to have a very limited risk profile, if you will. But the, the, the reason I bring that up is that in a business and you knew that you had a debt that you had to pay in, in twenty-five, twenty thirty, you would put money aside periodically so that when twenty thirty came around, you'd have the money to pull out and pay for it. You know, and I'm, I know, I'm not ready to talking to you. I'm talking to my colleagues on the board that this is a, it's huge. The fact that, as you mentioned sixteen, seventeen years ago, sixteen years ago, owed a hundred and fifty-three million, and now we owe multiple millions. Okay. We can't let that continue, obviously. So, and, and with your expertise coming in, you know, this is something, we're starting with you in two thousand nineteen. This should have started back in two thousand seven. And it should have been an annual report dealing with the multiple millions that we've got over that period of time. That's, that's all I've got. I, I, but I do appreciate the, the report. It's, it is a, and hopefully my colleagues have all read it and studied it and will read it again. This is an order of magnitude of the, of the dollars involved here are huge. But thank you.
Absolutely. I have to say, David Vincent, for something, I've, I've heard this and I've been trained on this so many times. And as Bill or trustee Withrow just said right now, it is so incredibly complex. And when you think you understand it, you understand it momentarily, and then you walk away and then it becomes just discombobulated. Just it becomes a, a big mess. So thank you for making this so understandable, going back to the history, going back to the terms and going to our strategies and really making it clear. Because again, to reiterate what trustee Withrow said, every board member needs to understand how, what this is, because this is our fiduciary responsibility. And this is so complex, it is incredibly critical that we understand. And we can't be distracted when we're listening to you. We have to understand as much as possible. So here are all of my questions. Number one, when you were talking about the sources for the payments, and you talked about A, B, C, and D, and the three of the four sources except, except for trust fund one come from the general fund, right? Even though they have different titles, they all three come from the general fund. Okay?
That's correct.
Because I don't think I knew that. Second of all, do we know what the twenty forty-nine payment will be?
Twenty forty-nine?
Twenty forty-nine payment.
I, I don't have that in front of me, but we do have a, have a schedule of that.
If it has anything to do with a graphical, it's probably going to be in the twenty million, maybe somewhere around there, or maybe even more, but.
It's, it's, it's right around twenty million. Yes. And I can provide that, that full schedule to the chancellor to circulate to the.
That would be great. And then, so for twenty, and now I'm looking at page, the, I don't know, page fourteen. So the long-term OPEB bond payment plan, from what I'm seeing on that, on the slide number fourteen, I believe, currently from our general fund, we, in twenty thirty-two, twenty thirty-three, we're paying about eighteen thousand three hundred, but we are going to be paying much more in twenty forty-nine, especially since we're looking to decrease trust one and we're looking to increase the general fund. And I'm saying that because I think it's really important for all of our constituents, for all of our members, for the district, for people to understand that our general fund payments, our general fund allocations, what we take from our general fund, will be getting larger and larger and larger, which means that we will have far less to spend on many different things, including salary, including any kind of expenditure. And I think that oftentimes we don't look towards what are our obligations? Where are we going to be in twenty thirty-two? Where are we going to be in twenty forty-nine? How much money is going to be taken from the general fund to pay this really critical and important and mandatory obligation? So again, am I right in my thinking there?
Very correct, very correct.
And that wouldn't have happened had you all not actually laid it out so perfectly clearly, at least for me tonight. So thank you. I'm sorry, chancellor. I didn't mean to.
No, I, I was just going to say thank you for asking that very pointed question. Because when people look at the general fund and they say you have all of this money, they are not looking at the obligations that we have. They're just looking at the bottom line and saying that that money is surplus, and it is not. And that's why I say sometimes I'm glad that we're having the enrollment management academy so that we can bring all of those factors in and get an understanding because there isn't a narrative out there that we are not doing as well as we could be because we're holding on to funds. And that is, that it's partially true, we are, but they are obligated funds. And I don't think that narrative is always played out in a public forum as well as it should be.
Thank you. Thank you both. Trustee Gonzalez, you went.
Thank you. I want to echo what you just said, President Reese, about how many times I've gone through this and how I, I get it and then I lose it and then I get it back. A couple of things that I think is, are also worth noting. Because although I personally, you know, I was on the board when we did this, I regret the vote. I wouldn't do it again. Having said that, what looks like just a catastrophic set of decisions that the board made aren't quite as crazy as one might have thought. And, and what I'm, what we need to remember is that we have an underlying obligation to employees to pay health benefits. We negotiated those as a district decades ago at a period when healthcare inflation did not appear to be as dramatic of a problem. Didn't appear to be a dramatic problem. It was a routine thing that employers provided healthcare and often provided lifetime benefits of healthcare. I think people need to understand that. And so, you know, we've got this big obligation. On the other hand, we have a big asset. Now, the obligations that you note are, you know, we have to pay off the bond, but we also have the underlying OPEB obligation itself. And to pay that underlying OPEB obligation, we've got a lot of money that are sitting in trust one. Now, whether we had the bond obligation or not, we'd still have the OPEB obligation. And we've dealt with that obligation by setting up the trust. Other districts that cut similar deals with their workers, they said, we'll pay you healthcare in the future. We will defer your benefits, your payments in the future. Not very many districts did what we did, tried to take care of that upfront. But those districts all have obligations. They have obligations to their workers that they promised, and they're on their books. So here's a question. Do we have a sense, if we look in California and we look across the districts that in fact made obligations to their workers that were future obligations? For example, the district where I work, foot held the answer. I have lifetime health benefits because I was hired back in the day when that was routine. As far as I know, my district down there has this massive obligation and they're paying it year out of year the same way we would be if we didn't have a trust. So my question is this, to put it in perspective, do we have a sense when we look around the state that other districts that have these long-term OPEB obligations, what their comparable debt is? We've got a debt that's OPEB that we're going to pay, the underlying benefit. We've also got the bond thing, and that's what we've been talking about. But it's balanced off, right? So do we have a sense of what is comparable in other districts, in other public agencies that did future obligations?
Trustee, we, we don't have a, an absolute answer for you. Or it, it would take a, a, a brief study to, to review some of the other, you know, college districts that are basically doing pay-as-you-go, or they may have started to set aside some dollars in a trust fund that's again, paid for but not out of bond proceeds. And, you know, we could provide maybe a, a quick summary of, of what that looks like. You know, to give you a little bit more information, you know, in regards to your, your question. It won't be all encompassing, but at least we'd give you a, a, a little bit of a snapshot.
Yeah, you know, what I'd like to say, if, if I can squeeze it in before your next question is, it's, we just had the auditor talk. This is information, the OPEB obligation is information that the auditors are required to report. We have a warehouse of information on community college districts. And we might just want to start by taking a look at the Bay Area Community College districts and, and sending a report back to the chancellor.
I think it would put our, our situation into a little bit of context that would be helpful for the public and would be helpful for the board. Again, I think we made a mistake, but that's, that, that shift sailed. Nonetheless, I think the perspective is useful. The second question that I have in this regard is, you know, every year, the state legislature takes up single payer healthcare. Governor Newsom, when he was a candidate, said he thought single payer universal healthcare was a good idea. I think many other people have done that. It didn't get very far in the legislature this year. But it seems to me this is another approach to dealing with long trauma obligation. And I'm wondering whether anyone here has been paying attention to the structure of that legislation. And in particular, it seems to me that the league and every chancellor in the district and every CFO, every chancellor in the state and every CFO in the state should be paying attention to this because it has quite a bit to do with the health of our districts collectively. So chancellor, is this something that is on our lobbying docket to really look at and make sure that any healthcare legislation, health insurance legislation that gets fashioned appropriately looks at these long-term district obligations that aren't just ours, they're statewide. They're every public agency in the state, a lot of private employers, but more importantly, a lot of working people who don't have health insurance. So, or is this part of our lobbying docket?
It isn't part of our lobbying docket to, to specifically ask for NGI or to look at that. What we do is they look at and provide us, in fact, I just shared it with our expanded cabinet on Monday, a list of bills that are out there pending that may have some ramifications for the district. However, I can ask them to particularly note if they hear of anything regarding healthcare. But it, we really haven't gotten a lot of guidance either from the, the state chancellor's office or from the legislators on dealing with this. It's been left up to each district. Ours took a more risky approach in dealing with it. I will say that I was at State Center Community College District for twenty years. I started in nineteen eighty-four and they did away with lifetime health benefits in nineteen eighty-six. And when I went to Chabot, Las Pecitas, they had gotten rid of theirs right about the time that I think we got rid of ours sometime around two thousand, two thousand one. So there's a variance when we look at how it's being handled by each college. So I don't think we can compare apples to apples, but we can at least get an idea, as David indicated, of how other districts within our region are dealing with it, excluding, I think, maybe the basic aid college districts because that, they are very different than, you know, FTS revenue generating institutions like us.
So I raised this issue because I see a path here for, at least in part, a political solution. You know, every year when universal healthcare is brought before the legislature, the powers of the insurance industry and other opponents are marshaled against any kind of health insurance reform. It seems to me that if we understood that the liabilities of other districts in the state, chancellor, if you understood what, you know, Ron Gerhardt is dealing with, what Judy Miner is dealing with and so forth, that there's the possibility of putting together some coherent political force. You know, if you look at boards of trustees or five hundred or so elected officials across the state who are all dealing with. You know, if you look at boards of trustees or five hundred or so elected officials across the state who are all dealing with some variation of our problem. Not our particular variation, but some variation of it. It seems to me that there should be some political capital. That can be brought to bear in this struggle for this big fight for universal healthcare. And that we keep getting beat up because we're not organized, because we're all, you know, sliced off one district at a time. So, anyway, I'm suggesting we actually have some power to find a political solution here. While we manage the financial solution bit by bit responsibly as we can, but let's keep our eyes on a bigger prize. Which is healthcare for working people. It's not a great thing that districts cut off their workers. In nineteen ninety or whatever it is, because that means those people don't have health insurance. The way that our employees do or our retirees do. That was a good thing we did. So, thank you.
Trust me, I I understand. I missed it. I got here in the fall of two thousand and four. I I absolutely understand what you're talking about. We we do need to look at it, something on a political arm and I'll put it on our. Our next agenda. We are meeting um, the districts that are multi-college districts are are meeting periodically. Just to share ideas and thoughts and to collaborate. So I will definitely put it on the agenda for our next meeting.
And I would suggest that that is board business. The board is the political arm of this institution. Each one of us is an elected official. We all have contacts. This is the appropriate business of the board. So involve us, we have influence. Thanks.
I I will also look at discussing it with um, Triple C T. Um, to see if that's something that they might want to address at a statewide level because you're right. Um, it is a board issue. This is an advocacy that needs to come from both sides.
Yep, absolutely. I must say, this has been the most productive conversation about OPEB that we've ever had, I think, that I've been here and witnessed. Um, Vincent, David, thank you both. Thank you so much for this presentation and we'll see you in two weeks, right?
Fantastic, and thank you.
Alrighty, bye, thanks. Alright, uh, folks, we are on the consent calendar, but there are a couple of things. Um, before the motion, I'd like our board secretary to explain six point one. And then also, um, let me just explain six point two. There are two calendars attached to six point two. Only because when we published the agenda, we didn't add the uh, A B eighteen twenty-five sexual harassment training. So the two calendars are in the uh, they're attached to six point two in the consent calendar, okay? Um, but Board Secretary, would you explain six point one and its approval of all consent items is the title of the one.
Of course, thank you, President. Um, so just as the president explained, um, I have added uh, for the purposes of the minute taking. Um, what happens when I do the minutes and the first consent item gets approved, that item, for example, six point two. Update board, the updated board meeting calendar, that would be the same item that would automatically populate to all other consent items as well throughout the agenda. So to alleviate that problem, I have added um, the six point one, which is approval of all consent items. So that is nothing you need to vote on, it's just the vote you guys do take on it and I will just add it all to there and it will just. All the way through about the consent calendar, approve all consent items. It's the only thing that'll be labeled. So that's just purely for minute purposes for myself.
Okay, now may I have a motion for the consent calendar, please?
Remove.
Thank you, trustee Withrow.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez, you went. Any discussion, anything to be polled? Alright, roll call, please.
Student trustee Cooper?
I need a clarification uh, of this. So is this uh, voting to approve reviewing? Uh, the consent calendar or voting to approve all of these items?
The second is voting to approve the items.
No, I'm not going to vote for uh, mass grouped items. Uh, I'm going to vote no.
Okay.
Thank you. Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy? Oh, she is left. Trustee Gonzalez, you went?
Yes.
Trustee Bonio? She is absent as well. Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Napoli Valeris?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And now let's move on to our action items, eleven point one. Consider approval of resolution twenty-one slash twenty-two dash sixty-three in support of the people of Ukraine. And I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I do want to just read the resolve to the resolution. Um, that is attached to your agenda item. Now, therefore, be it resolved. That the Peralta Community College District Governing Board hereby recognizes and supports unequivocally. Ukraine sovereignty and territorial integrity and declares support for Ukraine's choice of democracy and freedom. Versus authoritarianism. The Peralta Community College District Governing Board also supports its students and their families from Ukraine during this humanitarian crisis. And encourages its community to support the many nonprofit organizations who are providing the people of Ukraine. Much needed resources to survive and ultimately thrive in their fight for freedom. May I have a motion for?
So moved.
Thank you. Uh, Vice President Delphine Polk and then trustee Withrow is a second. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Hogan? Student trustee Cooper?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you went?
Yes.
Trustee Napoli Valeris?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Let's move on to eleven point Q. Consider readoption of resolution number twenty-one slash twenty-two dash fifty-one. For District Brown Act-covered legislative bodies to continue conducting meetings via teleconference per California Government Code. Section five four nine five three or Assembly Bill three sixty-one. Resolution number twenty-one slash twenty-two dash fifty-one. And Chancellor, would you like to discuss this a bit? Or at least let us know um, what we're doing in terms of what other colleges have done?
Alright, um, as I indicated previously, um, I do have meetings with my colleagues. Um, fellow CEOs, uh, fellow chancellors specifically of multi-college districts. Um, we did an informal poll to find out what was happening with this particular resolution within our districts. And it it runs the gamut. Uh, it, some college districts have moved back to a full face-to-face. Even though they limit the number of individuals that can come into the galley. Uh, some of them have continued to be fully online, um, as we are. But most of them are moving toward a hybrid approach and that hybrid approach can take uh, various uh, variations of. Whether you want to open up the gallery, if you want to still continue to have public comment via Zoom. Um, having individuals, key individuals present during that time. And so my recommendation is that we. Approve this particular resolution going forward because under this resolution, we're able to move to a hybrid approach. Just as our colleges are moving towards a fully face-to-face um, in the fall. And that would give us time to iron out the kinks of what is appropriate for our district. And to approve this and look at starting a hybrid during the month of April. So that we're still in compliance with the, this is the new Brown Act. And Natasha, if I've explained it, um, if you could provide some additional information regarding this. So we are recommending to continue to approve this, uh, knowing that we're going to move to a hybrid approach. Um, and that is a recommendation from staff. But again, Natasha, if you'd like to explain it a little bit better than I have, I I would. Appreciate any assistance.
Thank, sure, thank you, Chancellor. Yeah, I mean, I think I think you did a wonderful job. By considering the approval or reconsidering reconsidering the renewal of the adoption of this resolution. It gives the board and the district the flexibility to continue to use the sections of the Brown Act that allow for the online meeting. And compliance with the new conditions for online meetings, um, while you move into a hybrid model. And so by doing so, you're allowed to continue having some members of the of the dais online. And um, and some members in public, um, in person, I'm sorry, if that's the the will of the board. Um, and so it just gives you kind of the maximum flexibility to be able to move the the districts' meetings. Closer and closer to a hybrid model coming back in 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 person.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Um, and so, so I believe that. Have we already put forth the motion first?
No.
Let's do the motion first and let's have our.
Second.
Second, thank you, trustee Gonzalez, you went. Um, trustees, discussion? Okay, maybe I'll, oh, go ahead.
I just want to make it clear that this is hybrid for coming back, right? In person?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Just wanted to make that clear for everybody.
Yes, yes.
Not a problem, Vice President.
Trustee Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam President. So I voted no on this item for the past few board meetings, but I'm going to vote yesterday with the. Um, going off what the chancellor said, that we're going to go towards a hybrid model in April. And thank you so much for working hard on this, Chancellor. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And then, um, so we have a board meeting April twelve and then I believe, Sasha, correct me if I'm wrong. And then I believe we have our next board meeting on the twenty-fifth. So.
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth, okay. And and just so, um, everybody knows, I know that we were going to hybrid in April, but I'm not going to be. Present physically on the twelfth. So if if that's something that we maybe want to change to the twenty-sixth. Or if we were good for me to just call in on that day, because I intend to be here for the hybrid. Physically be at the district for all of the hybrid meetings, but just wanted to let you all know that I'm not going to be physically present on the twelfth.
I believe, um, President Reese, that that is what the flexibility of approving this would allow. Is that you could still, if not physically here, you would still be present as if we are now. Um, I would like to start on the the twelfth or at least aim for that date. Um, just because we put this off, um, and I think it would send the right signal to our uh, constituency groups. That we are committed to moving forward with more face-to-face just as they are.
Agreed, okay, sounds good.
Understanding that you may not be there on the twelfth.
Yeah, okay. Um, student trustee Cooper?
Hey there, um, I just wanted to uh, draw on the point and suggested that maybe this would not. Uh, you know, send the signal or reassurance to the our constituency groups that, you know, might be being suggested here. I think intertwined in this topic, um, is, uh, you know, a lot of the. Uh, backlash that came uh, a- around these subjects about. Uh, you know, pressing for people to be, for for employees to be back in scenarios where they are exposed. And not necessarily uh, feeling safe. Some people really wanting to be, you know, back in face FaceTime, but you know, some people. Really feeling unsafe like that and not feeling like they have, uh, you know, the full agency to both, you know, keep their uh, job. And source of income, uh, as well as, you know, maintain the standard of safety that 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 they feel secure with. Um, and it was made a point, which is where I feel it got wrapped up in this ish issue and topic. Um, that there was a sense of of a bitter irony, i- if not double standards. Uh, you know, from several entities in our community and groups in our community, um, that we were, you know, passing motions to enable ourselves. Uh, to continue having that uh, long distance or remote agency uh, and security. Uh, while um, expecting others to, you know, come back into work spaces and expose themselves. So I don't necessarily think that either a voluntary hybrid model. Um, n- nor even showing back up necessarily. Um, uh, you know, eases the sense of insecurity and danger created by those who who don't feel ready just yet. Um, that said, I do support moving to a hybrid approach. I'm I'm going to, you know, vote in favor of this. Um, but I just don't want these issues to get mixed up and and uh, when I I find that they're very separate. And that there are still concerns and uh, and fears uh, to be addressed. And I think um, what I would really call for in that is just uh, for us to exercise. A little bit more uh, creative thinking, like I applaud uh, President Johnson for doing, for looking at how to create more remote. Options for classified positions who may wish to continue working from from home. And just doing a little more exploring on what possibilities we can find uh, in that area, I think would really make me happy and a lot of others happy. Thanks so much.
Um, your point is well taken, um, trustee, uh, student trustee Cooper. Um, but you may not be aware of it, but we are looking at a telework policy for the whole district. Um, so Merritt College is maybe moving forward a little bit faster than the all of the other colleges. Um, but that is something that is happening throughout the district, just so that you're aware of that.
Thank you. I had somehow missed that and that is very exciting to hear. Thanks so much.
Trustee Gonzalez, you went?
Thank you, um, so two thoughts. Um, one is that. There are ways in which going online is actually um, made participation in board meetings. Not only more convenient for trustees, but also for members of the public. It's much easier to dial in, watch, be able to make a public comment than to go down to the district boardroom. Wait around for hours to be able to make a comment, et cetera. So. I think this has also been true of student services, of classrooms, et cetera. So, you know, we need to be thinking about the advantages and disadvantages of different modes of participation, which I trust we are. Um, I'm also mindful that kind of one of the critical issues, I think, in this whole process. Of figuring out remote versus in-person is the question of consultation. Do we talk to people about what's working, what's not working, what their needs are, et cetera? And so as we move towards a hybrid, I hope that this board will actually have a real discussion about that. Because we haven't, like, nobody, I, as near as I know, there's been zero group discussion. Or individual consultation about what do board members need, what do board members want, what do we think makes sense for the public? What makes sense for staff? What is our opinion on any of this? Um, so I look forward to a proposal about what a hybrid would look like. I think that it makes sense to have a lot of flexibility. Um, I hope that we can retain the best. Of what we've gotten from this remote board meeting process. Um, and then also figure out how to meet the various needs of. The public, et cetera. So, um, let's make sure that we're all collaborating and consulting in this process. Thanks.
To follow that train of thought, and I don't, I think I just heard that my speakers are not, my mic is not working very well, so can you all hear me clearly? Or am I faint? Okay, um, to follow that train of thought then, Nikki, we're going to be meeting on April twelve. And it's going to be hybrid, so we're sure about that. Uh, the logistical components of it are not yet clear. Um. I I'm just trying to figure out. What do, how, do we need to talk about this in open session? Can this just be said to? Natasha, pull me out of my little uh, dark circle cave here.
Thank you, President Reese. Yeah, the just, any, any board discussion regarding the modality for the meetings would be an open session discussion. And the agendizing of this particular item would allow for that. Um, I do believe that in the interim. Um, the chancellor, probably through staff, is serving individual boards for the planning purpose. Of like needing to know who's going to be online and who, so that is not a discussion item. There's no deliberation going on in that process. But just simple scheduling, which is permitted under the Brown Act to be done outside of the agendized meeting. Um, but outside of that, any any further discussion regarding. But outside of that, any further discussion regarding board meeting modality in this resolution would be done in a public session.
So then, hearing that, I feel like we are in an okay place to just take care of the technical scheduling issues through the Chancellor's staff. And Nikki, is that what I heard from you in terms of, you know, we will have probably another conversation, open session, about how this is going, what else we need to do, but for the first meeting on April twelfth, we seem to be in a, in good form?
Are you asking for my personal response?
Yeah, but make it brief.
As always.
Yeah, right.
So I trust that the chancellor and the board officers can figure out a proposal, and then we'll figure it out from there. I don't think we've, like, when people use the word hybrid, that's not been explained what that means. So is that like four board members there, three not, mix and match? Board officers? I have no idea what it means. So, you know, what I'm hearing is we've got some flexibility. We're going to be moving towards some in-person, and what that looks like? I don't know. And I don't know that anybody else knows right now, except for maybe the Chancellor and you.
We don't know right now. We needed to get the vote to start moving forward before we start doing those planning. I need to consult with Mark Johnson on the technical aspects of it, but I didn't want to expend any energy if we were going to continue as we were. So between now and when we have our first hybrid meeting on the twelfth, and that is a projected, you know, there may be some complications. I will be sending out some type of communication to all the board members, soliciting a one-way communication from them to me. This is Proposal A, this is Proposal B, which proposal, or even a C, which one do you feel the most comfortable with? I'm not going to seek any medical verification. I think IVC, Ron McKinley already has that, and just to identify that is confidential information, but just to get an idea of what are we looking at, what would be the scope, what key individuals would be present, and then the technical aspects of having that live and on, you know, in a Zoom, how, what are the, I don't know what the technical part of that, and having it on YouTube at the same time. Those are the kinds of questions that I need to figure out as we move forward with this. But it will be some combination of in-person and online. That part, I can tell you, that's the hybrid part that will be definite. Some online, some in-person. But the very specifics of that are still yet to be determined, and I'll get that information out to you once I meet with staff. We have a meeting tomorrow to discuss some things based upon what happened at this meeting, and that is one of those items.
So if I can just conclude by saying, we have a model of classrooms that are called high-flaxed classrooms, and it seems like that's the basic model that we're trying to figure out how to adopt. We don't have to reinvent the wheel, but I think what we will be doing is an experiment.
Absolutely. It will be an experiment. And we, I don't know if the boardroom has that capability, so that's the part that I need to figure out. But I will be on the ground. I will be there for that first meeting on the twelfth, and we will see what we will see and see if it works. But we have great people sitting around the table right now to go forward with that, and we'll try to make it as smooth as possible. The biggest obstacle, according to the other chancellors that I discussed, is making it a smooth transition, so that it isn't cumbersome and people are used to seeing us live, and then it would just be in a different venue. Some may be sitting in the boardroom, some may be like they're doing now, some people may have backgrounds, you know, so that's the part, the operational part that I'll figure out, and then I'll let each of the board members know which fits within what they would like, given, you know, taking into account some of the things that student Cooper, student trustee Cooper indicated. We're not trying to force anybody, but this gives us some flexibility in moving in that direction. And I think that has also been the concern of certain board members, that we do that also, so. I know that's not exactly what you wanted to hear, but that's where we are. It is going to be an experiment, because we haven't ever done this before.
Madam President?
Yes. Trustee Withrow, go for it. Yes, trustee Withrow.
I've been involved in the hybrid situation meetings. Businesses have been doing this for some time, well before the pandemic, especially international corporations. Forces have done it for years and years and years. So, you know, it's not a, it's nothing really new. The one issue that has been brought up to me that causes the most problem is being in a facility that does not accommodate Wi-Fi penetration. I don't know what that means, but if it's...
We have our CTIO sitting with us right now, so those are the things that I'm talking about that we have to address. Those are the specific details of moving forward that we'll have to address between now and April twelfth.
I would think our IT people could tell right off the bat. They'd just go down for a quick test and whatever to see that the, because we have the computers in there and the screens and all of that, the array shouldn't be a problem at all, as a matter of fact, but the ones that I've been involved in show the whole room. You know, it's not just focusing on desk here, chairs here, whatever, the whole body room. So I think it will...
I agree with you. I don't think it's going to be a problem. I think it's just going to be taking the concept and operationalizing it and getting the right staff in there to make sure that there's a smooth transition. And I absolutely, I believe in dress rehearsals. So believe me, before we try this out on the twelfth, we will have tried it out previous to that.
Vice President Delphine Polk?
On a little bit of a lighter note, I'm actually really excited to go back. I've been wanting to for a while, because I have never sat in a meeting on the Dias. I've been taking all my meetings from my bedroom, so. Just want to say I'm really excited to see all of you in person and to have these meetings at the district office.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to seeing you too, Chancellor.
We've had one meeting face-to-face.
Hopefully, hopefully we'll have a lot more.
Absolutely.
With that said, shall we vote? Roll call, please.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Cooper?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Bunny, oh, she's gone. Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellaries?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Eleven point three, consider approval of Resolution Number twenty-one slash twenty-two dash sixty-two, ratifying year two of an agreement incorporating piggyback contract for the Career America LLC DBA Ocelot for the College of Alameda's purchase of the Ocelot Chabot Shet boat for enrollment management. Motion, please.
So moved.
Thank you. Trustee Withrow, second? Second? Anyone? Let's go.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Jenkins. Discussion? All right, roll call.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Cooper?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy? She's gone. Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellaries?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Eleven point four, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two, annual district audit report. May I have a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Thank you, trustee Withrow, second?
I can't.
Thank you, trustee Jenkins. Discussion? Seeing none? Let's vote.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Cooper?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy? Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellaries?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Eleven point five, consider appointment of member to the Parcel Tax Measure Oversight Committee. May I have a motion? Saying, thank you, trustee Withrow, second?
I can't.
Thank you, trustee Jenkins. Discussion? Okay, roll call.
Student trustee Hogan? Trustee, student trustee Hogan, are you there? Nope. Student trustee Cooper?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy? Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellaries?
Yes.
Motion passes. Oh, there she is.
You got student trustee Hogan?
Yes. All right.
No worries, no worries. All right. Eleven point six, the last item of the agenda. Consider approval of the list of firms pre-qualified to provide surveying services district-wide. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, trustee Withrow.
I can't.
You, trustee Jenkins. Discussion? Okay, let's vote on this. Roll call.
Student trustee Hogan?
Yes.
Student trustee Cooper?
I'm sorry, I accidentally got rid of the item that we're on. Could you repeat that one more time?
Consider approval of the list of firms pre-qualified to provide surveying services district-wide.
Oh, okay, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Handy? Oh, she's gone. Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Yes.
Trustee Napoleon Bellaries?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you. Onto reports, Board of Trustees' reports. Trustee Withrow?
I pass.
Thank you. Student trustee Cooper?
Not this evening, no.
Okay. Vice President Delphine Polk?
I'm just, again, excited to be back in the, or to be back in our meetings face-to-face, standing in solidarity with the other workers who have to go back as well, so looking forward to that.
Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Mine will pass tonight. Thanks.
Trustee Jenkins?
Pass.
I too will pass. Let's move on to thirteen announcements.
Student trustee Hogan, I think?
I'm sorry, student trustee Hogan.
No, I don't. That's okay. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, let's move on to thirteen announcements.
Yes, so first announcement, College of Alameda is hosting a community partner breakfast from nine AM to eleven AM on Friday, March twenty-fifth. Please reserve your spot by visiting the COA website at www.alameda.edu. Laney College is hosting the twenty-twenty-two Be Like Coders Hackathon on Saturday, March twenty-sixth, and Sunday, March twenty-seventh, both in-person and via Zoom. Visit the Laney website at laney.edu for more information. Spring break is next week, from Monday, March twenty-eighth through Sunday, April third. The Peralta Colleges will be closed on Thursday, March thirty-first in observance of Sascha Chavez Day. Berkeley City College will host its first annual career fair Thursday, April seventh, twenty-twenty-two, from ten AM to three PM. And lastly, the next Board of Trustees' meeting will be Tuesday, April twelfth, twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you, Vice President Delphine Polk. All right, with that, we will adjourn. Everyone have a wonderful spring break. Thank you for being with us tonight, and we will see you all soon. Take care.
Bye.
See you all face-to-face. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.